Oh, we're past.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna call.
Sure.
You are able to pass.
Yeah.
We keep them on the news?
Are we good, Mark? The councilman contract is going to be on by phone, so...
Filing a friend.
Fire the one.
Went to emu.
Is there David?
I'm here.
All right, we're starting the meeting right now. You're in.
All right, are we good? All right, good evening, everybody. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meetings Act, was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings at the town council on December 11, 2020. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader in the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. Mrs. Rowley, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brindle?
Here.
Council members Havagood?
Here.
Harmley?
Here.
LaGripbo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Contract? Dardia?
Here.
Voice?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Voice, and then for the salute to the flag.
Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow in understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength, can always find compromise working together. May we find a common ground, enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish roadblocks of ego and fear today. May we be open to others' ideas and beliefs. Amen. Congratulations.
Congratulations to the United States of America, and to your republic, which stands on a mission, on a high, and invisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
Thank you. So tonight, we have the great pleasure of doing something that's, I think, was an incredible opportunity to have brought the community together, and that is to celebrate and acknowledge our Westfield High School state champion girls soccer team. So I don't know how many of you got a chance to watch these girls play. I had the great pleasure of attending the championship game, and it was such an inspiration. They were not a girls soccer team, they were soccer team. And I have to say, your toughness on the field, and the way you guys played more importantly with such joy, was so obvious, and such an inspiration for so many of us. So I'm thrilled to provide a brief proclamation, I'm from the town, and then, and actually, Jim, maybe you can hand them up. Yeah, oh yeah, I'll set the microphone. And we have individual copies for each of you. And my friend Chase over here made sure I got the pronunciations right, so here we are, in honoring of the Westfield High School Blue Devils girls soccer team.
Thank you.
Whereas, on November 21, 2021, the Westfield High School Blue Devils girls soccer team won the NJSIAA Group Four state championship at Kane University by a thrilling score of 1-0, 1-0 over Freehold Township with eight seconds left remaining in the game. Whereas, the victory was the first state title for the girls soccer team since 1989. Hear all the oohs and ahs, everybody? Pick it in. Whereas, on the way to winning the state championship, won the Union County championship, and the North Jersey Section Two Group Four championship by defeating rival Scotch Plains Spanwood in both games. That was fantastic. It made it even sweeter, for sure. And whereas, finished their 2021 season with an undefeated record of 21-0 and 1, ranked first in New Jersey by NJ.com. 11th and 12th in the country in national polls. And whereas, under the leadership of head coach Alex Schmidt. Fifth grade teacher at Wilson 2. Assistant coach Katie Wartimer. Assistant coaches Chris Carson and Catherine Ponce. Volunteer coach Bernie Cuddy. Junior varsity coach Karine Helwig. Freshman coach Caitlin Sanchez. The players represented their team, their school, and their hometown with the highest standards of athleticism, integrity, and sportsmanship. And whereas, all of the members of the team. Seniors, Kim DiFilippo. Elise Fox. Izzy Gauthier. Izzy, say it for me.
Gauthier.
Gauthier. Chelsea Little. Ellie Sherman. Kelly Sullivan. Zana Velkov. And juniors, Cat Angel. Kiara Kosenza. Kira Dursey. Sutton Factor. Gabby Gill. Jane Guglielmo. Emmy Kolosoglu. Alisa Martinez. Bridget Morrison. Olivia Rosaria. And Emily Weinstein. And sophomores, Emily Cadigan. Kate Giglio. Marissa O'Connell. And freshman, Audra Toth. Are deserving of recognition for their individual contributions to the team's success. The mayor and town council of the town of Westfield wish to commend the coaches and the players of the Westfield High School Blue Devils girls soccer team for their sportsmanship and many successes during the 2021 season. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Shelley Brindle, on behalf of the town council and the citizens of the town of Westfield, on the 7th day of December 2021, do hereby congratulate the 2021 Westfield High School Blue Devil Girls, Blue Devils girls soccer team on their successful season by capturing the NJSIAA Group Four state championship title, and do hereby applaud them for their exceptional dedication to the sport and to sportsmanship. Congratulations. If you want to specially acknowledge the athletic director, Sandra Mamory, who's been such a great. So we'll take a few pictures, and then, and then you guys can get on your way. Congratulations, that's for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Run like the wind.
Thank you.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Second half.
Well, that was fun.
It was really classy.
Yeah, that was, that was fun.
Very special.
Okay, so, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick updates. Leaf collection continues. Little Downer after the girls soccer right there, so. Leaf collection continues. We're in pass two right now. And just a couple of things to mention. We're following the schedule we printed this year, which is a little bit different, so that people had know when their leaves were picked up the week, what we picked up and when to put them out, kind of limit the amount of time that leaves on the street. We are still giving out free bags if people want to get them at the conservation center. There will be a third pass, maybe a fourth, depending on the volume. Right now, the volume is very high. Leaves fell very much at one time this year, the majority of them. So again, leaf bags are still available, and we are doing a third pass after this pass, which will then be followed by a street sweepers as weather permits. And so we have a few more weeks to go for the second pass, but thanks to the residents for complying as best they can in this first year of this new schedule. Remember, no branches, pumpkins, hay bales, those type of things in the leaf piles. When we pick up the leaf piles, bring them to our center, we have to haul them to the Union County facility, and if they have those things in them, they can get turned away, and we get stuck with the disposal cost, so I guess something to do. Other update, Union County gave us an update this week on traffic lights. We've been waiting for it for quite a bit, on two intersections, West Broad and Scotch Plains Avenue, and Lambers Mill Road and Rawway Avenue. Both, you've seen some work being done there recently. The support poles have been installed at both locations. The rest of the equipment is being delivered this week, which is the mast arms, lighting, infrastructure, all the, all the technology that goes into the poles. The county told me that they expect the new lights at both intersections to be installed, tested, and fully functional by the end of December. So it's been a long wait, but both, nice, some nice safety improvements at both those intersections. Again, West Broad and Scotch Plains Avenue, which replaces the current blinking yellow-red there now, and Lambers Mill Road and Rawway, which there has been, never been a light there, so that's a new enhancement. And lastly, paving. We've had a big push with paving November, December, which is unique. The weather has been actually pretty good. We've had guys out today paving, crews out today. So just a couple of notes, really had two remarkable paving jobs that last week of two very busy, highly traveled roads with schools on them, Willow Grove Road and Dudley Avenue. And just want to thank the engineer, the contractor, the police department for doing all that did to make sure that the incomunities were limited on those roads while the paving happened. The contractor, in both cases, two separate contractors. Willow Grove Road was a town job that we hired out through a bidding process, and Dudley Avenue was Elizabeth Town Gas Contractor, which we required them to repave the road after they cut into it. Both contractors did a wonderful job of staging the project accordingly to make it less disruptive, and got both roads done in one week, very long stretches of road. And even in the Dudley's case, got it striped the same week, which is wonderful. So thank you all those people as well. And then, this, this week, as of today, but probably by tomorrow, the grid of Drake Place, Roosevelt, Horton, Cumberland, Downer, and Paulstead will be finished. The last piece to do is really from Paulstead on Downer, from Paulstead to South Avenue. The rest of the grid has been done, and striping will follow. And then, that's Elizabeth Town Gas requirement paving. They will move to the next grid, which is Columbus, Grandview, Irving, Ripley, Elizabeth, Pine, and Sycamore. They'll move to that probably if not tomorrow, by Friday, by Thursday, and they'll continue to work on that as long as the weather holds. Next week looks to be a good week of weather for paving, so that's great. And then, if the weather holds, they'll move to Hillside Avenue after that. And then, there's two grids due to weather that they're going to be moving to this spring, which is a Topping Hill, Kimball, Winia, Baker, Linden, Jefferson, Canterbury, and Stonely, Westfield, Shack and Maxson, Washington, Everson, and Beechwood. All this information is on our website. The roads that have been completed are marked down there. The roads will be carried over, will be, will be listed, and, but again, a really great paving work being done. One last thing to say, the town scheduled paving of 40 sections of, or entire sections of 40 roads, our 40 roads at Willow Grove being done last week have been completed this year. And Elizabeth Town Gas was required to repave either entire or sections of 49 roads. If they continue to complete their expected grids in the next two weeks, well, they'll have basically 35 or 37 of those 49 roads done this year. So pretty impressive to have almost 60-some-odd roads in town touched in some way with paving improved. And next year, we have a very aggressive schedule again, and we'll have more utility work being done in town as well. So a lot of work happening in a very unique time of year, which doesn't normally happen due to weather, so it's been great.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Jim, real quick, the striping, will that be, especially like near Temoca School, will that be done in the spring, or will it be done?
Yes, so striping will be done. Striping is a little more temperature sensitive. We've been fortunate right now. If, if it cannot be done with thermoplastic striping, we'll do, with that, we'll ask them to do water-based paint for the, for the winter, and then go back and do thermoplastic, thermoplastic paint in the, in the, in the spring. So, but yeah, there'll be some striping down. They'll either do water-based paint, or we have done things we've called ghost striping, so the crosswalks and the stop bars will be, will be noticeable just to get through the winter, but water-based paint is better to get through the winter. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. There's some seats in the front row if anybody wants to sit down, so, you know, just say, all right. Like the teacher, no one wants to sit in the front. Well, good evening, everybody. I'll just go make a few opening remarks before we get to the agenda. I just thank you all for joining us, even by here, or for watching us on Facebook Live. The replay is always available, and we're only taking public comment in person for those that are here tonight. Just a few updates. I do want to thank the 157 residents who submitted applications to serve on our 22 boards, commissions, and mayor's advisory councils. So we are in the process of reviewing the applications. We want to ensure that there's diversity of experience, diversity of ward representation, and that we will be looking to make notifications about those who's been appointed and so forth in the next two weeks. With the formal appointments will be happening at the January 4th Annual Reorganization Meeting. I also want to thank everybody who came out to our annual Christmas tree and menorah lightings. They were quite successful with the holidays upon us. I just want to stress how important it is to support our local businesses. I just remind everybody, the Downtown Westfield gift card is available. It's a great gift for friends, teachers, neighbors, a tremendous number of participating stores. You can visit the Downtown Westfield website if, to purchase, and you can do it electronically. And we have a gingerbread display contest. Do you want to comment on that, Don?
No, this will be our fifth year?
Fourth annual.
Fourth annual gingerbread contest, and yeah, we encourage everybody to submit. We've had some outstanding submissions, and we love when the kids get involved, and the residents love walking around, seeing them in the shops. So it's good for the businesses as well, give people a reason to come out.
And the deadline to?
The deadline to submit is the 10th.
Okay.
You're just, not the, the house, just that you're going to drop off the house, and then Savory Spice will be collecting houses on Monday and Tuesday, the 14th and the 15th.
Terrific. And while you're downtown, there is a free, there's free gift wrapping at the North Avenue train station and the welcome center, from the holiday welcome center by the Downtown Westfield Corporation. Today, I just, I had a meeting, Jim Gildea and I held a meeting with the school superintendent, Dr. Gonzalez, the business administrator Dana Sullivan, and the president, vice president of the Board of Ed. And we do this fairly regularly, discuss opportunities to work together and give them updates. This time, we also talk about next steps in the Edison Fields Project. And very importantly, and very relevant, is our joint commitment to combat hate speech and biased crimes in Westfield, particularly following the most recent discovery of an anti-Semitic hate symbol at the high school. There is no daylight between how Dr. Gonzalez and I, and I think the school district and our administration and our community, we feel strongly about the need to take meaningful action beyond, to denounce these abhorrent acts. Dr. Gonzalez is meeting with a number of community and religious organizations in the area to gain their perspectives, and I've agreed to sign on to an upcoming statement being issued by the JCC of Central New Jersey, and will continue to engage with the American Jewish Committee about their work to denounce antisemitism. Hopefully, you know that recently, we passed a resolution adopting the AJC's definition of antisemitism, and we also passed an ordinance raising fines for graffiti biased crimes from $200 to $2,000. But clearly, that's not enough. It was clear after our meeting that the school district and the town are united in our solidarity with our Jewish friends and neighbors, and that these heinous acts will not be tolerated. To further the conversation, the Human Relations Advisory Commission, in partnership with the MLK Association and the AJC, will be hosting a town hall in early February to discuss how we can do better. And details on that town hall and, and where and location will be available right in early January. Tonight, we have several important items on the agenda. You'd never know by the number of people here this evening. I do want to cover a few of the redevelopment topics upfront to provide some additional context to what you'll be hearing from our redevelopment planner, Chris Colley. Clearly, I know many of you are here to talk about the Prospect Ferris redevelopment plan that we are voting on tonight. I, and I think many of us, have received lots of comments, concerns regarding this proposal. Last night, the planning board concluded that this proposed project is consistent with the master plan, but there are many, many more steps to take. Tonight, I just wanted to clarify some of the facts, and make sure you are aware of the process, the benefits, and the purpose of this redevelopment plan, and then what our next steps are going to be. So I've heard from many people that this project came out of the blue and is being fast-tracked, when actually, in reality, it's been in the works for many years. It just hasn't been, it's been banted about, and it was predating my term as mayor. I was initially made aware of it by the property owner in 2018, when property owner James Ward was advised to wait until the 2019 master plan reexamination was completed to ensure that any proposed project on those properties was reflective of that master plan and the community input that it represented. Since then, he had consulted with many stakeholders just to get input into ultimately the redevelopment plan that is being presented tonight. I know that they spoke with Historic Preservation, the Site Review Committee of the Planning Board, the Redevelopment Team, and this county council. And that feedback has been incorporated into the redevelopment plan which is being presented today. I just can't reiterate enough, this project is still very conceptual, and stakeholder input does not reflect approval, and it's far from it. It's just, you know, make sure that it's consistent with what we're talking about this evening. So one of the things, just to understand redevelopment, historically, the town has never done redevelopment agreements. The first project requiring a redevelopment agreement was the Elite Project, the what we call Westfield Crossing on South Avenue. But what we're doing, and I think what's very different, which we've been very upfront about, is we are using the tools of redevelopment law to require redevelopment agreements with key, high-profile projects, not all projects, but key ones, to hold developers accountable. And these agreements provide us the opportunity to assert a tremendous amount of control over projects, from architectural standards to traffic and parking, to historic preservation requirements to sustainability, all of which result in several key public benefits. Tonight's project, which you'll hear more about from Chris Colley, we have required the restoration and designation of a historic home, an 8,000-square-foot green roof, first in Westfield, a comprehensive traffic study and plan, and below-grade parking, which is significant. Additionally, and very importantly, they are building 10 affordable housing units that will count towards our affordable housing unmet need. So just to clarify what's happening tonight, the action we are taking is a vote to adopt the redevelopment plan, which sets the development standards for the property. It is not an approval to begin construction, far from it. The next steps would then be an executed redevelopment agreement between the developer and town, which would be followed by an application for site plan approval to the planning board. And once again, they'll be hearing on that, and the public is encouraged to attend and offer their input to the planning board, who will then put further conditions on what is allowed and could happen on the site if it passes, if it moves forward. And so in addition, there's also final approval that would be required from the Historic Preservation Commission regarding the restoration and use of the historic home. So I just want to assure everybody that there are several opportunities to shape and amend this project if it actually moves forward after tonight. And if it does, this is only the beginning of the process to collect additional input and information for the best possible outcome. But further in redevelopment, there is another thing happening tonight regarding redevelopment, and that is a resolution to approve the redevelopment agreement for the Handler Building. As you may recall, back in July, this council voted to adopt the redevelopment plan for this site, where Westfield residents Michelle and Greg Reddington will relaunch Ready Farms, a vertical hydroponic farm that will produce locally grown produce year-round in this former factory that was, that was originally slated to be more affordable housing units. It's going to provide additional education classes about indoor farming, and eatery, and event space, and a cooking school. So just this week, the, the court approved the changes in our fair share housing plan to allow for this project. It's worth noting that at the court hearing, the judge actually received, provided glowing praise to the town for this plan and the ingenuity of the amendments that allowed this Handler project and hydroponic farm to happen. So now we will be gaining a vertical farm as an economic development driver that we also think has a lot of social impact potential, rather than an additional apartment building on North Avenue. So the agreement outlines that we are voting on tonight, it's a resolution, outlines the scope of the project, and ensures that the redeveloper will build in accordance with the previously approved redevelopment plan, which outlines what he's required to do in terms of a vertical farm. So that is the next step in this redevelopment process. So just on a final note about redevelopment, there was lots of, I know, discussion about pilot programs in the past, and when we were doing the Westfield Crossing public hearing. And pilot programs are usually enabled to provide a, a project to move forward that normally wouldn't, a good, a, a project to move forward that couldn't otherwise be built. In this case, we needed the affordable housing. So not all redevelopment projects warrant a pilot agreement, and here tonight, we have two projects that are up for consideration. Neither one of them will be provided a pilot agreement, so I just want to be very clear about that, too. So clearly, we have a lot to cover. I'm thrilled, I think we're all thrilled that you all are here. We love to hear from the public. It's important that you are part of the process, so thank you for being that. And I think the first step is we're going to hand it over to Chris Colley from Tapology, who's going to present the Prospect Ferris redevelopment plan. Now, he presented this plan two weeks ago, but we've asked him to present it again because I recognize that many of you are here and might not have had the opportunity to see it, and I think it provides a good context for, for what is, what's being presented.
Sure.
Quick, five-minute break while we set up. Bear with us. Few minutes.
A few minutes. All right, I'll move it over.
You need one of these every minute.
Maybe this microphone is... I'm actually just going to sit right here so I can... Just till we get it on. These bikes are working, and this one's working.
Okay, I'm going to use them now.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. Okay. We break down public hearing, okay. All right. Yeah. No. Okay. All set? Great. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening. As the mayor mentioned, my name's Chris Colley. I am a redevelopment planner. I work for a firm called Topology. We are redevelopment planners for the town. Joined by my colleague Phil Abramson back there, standing. So happy to be here this evening. For folks that have attended either of the two previous meetings, I apologize to say that my presentation is going to cover a lot of the same ground, but given the number of people out here this, at the meeting, thought it was worth it to walk through the project. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to hit really on three things. I'm going to talk about the property first. I'm going to talk about the contents of the redevelopment plan. I'm going to provide a little bit of an overview of the relationship between the redevelopment plan and the master plan, as was discussed last night at the planning board hearing. So I should talk for about, I don't know, 13, 14 minutes. Okay, just to sort of rehash a little bit of background, this is the third gathering to discuss this matter. Right before Thanksgiving, this ordinance was introduced. Last night, as was mentioned, the planning board considered it for its relationship to the master plan, found it to be not inconsistent with the master plan, largely based on the material that I'll be going through this evening. And tonight, we're here for a second reading, a public hearing, and a potential adoption, or not, of the actual redevelopment plan. Just for sake of clarity, for folks that haven't attended meetings of this nature before, a redevelopment plan is really zoning. It's a specific zoning ordinance for a specific property, and that's exactly what's contained in the document that the council's considering. As the mayor mentioned, this is a step, and a significant step frankly in the process, but not the last step. The next step in this process, should the ordinance be adopted, would be a redevelopment agreement, which is a very detailed document, which outlines a lot of project details, many of which I'll discuss as I go through the presentation. And then ultimately, should we get through that phase as well, the project, like all projects, would end up in front of the land use board for a potential site plan. Okay. So what properties are we actually talking about this evening? We're talking about three sites, or three lots located on the corner of Ferris and Prospect. This is Prospect Street, running here. Yep, you can see my cursor. And this is Ferris Place here. Properties are a little under one acre. Currently, there is two primary structures on the site. The one, sort of more notable one for the purpose of our discussion, is located at 112 Ferris Place. It's a property that's identified in your master plan as a historic structure, recently nominated by the Historic Preservation Commission, to be designated as a historic structure dating back to somewhere in the mid-18th century, and as I said, located on the Ferris Place side of the property. There's another structure on Prospect Street, which is a sort of one-story building currently used for an office use, and a rear parking lot here on the edge of Prospect. It's kind of an interesting lot, or kind of an interesting area, and it sort of sits in between a couple of different types of the town, kind of on the edge of downtown. We think of it as a transitional property. I'll talk about that a little more later. But it's surrounded by like a mixture of different building types and uses. Sort of off your screen up here to the north, or northwest, you have the Westfield Arms property, which is a multifamily building. Further down Prospect Street, you have the Savannah, which is seen here, number two, another multifamily building, four stories. Down Ferris Place, you have the YMCA building, which you're all presumably familiar with. And then along Prospect Street, you have these sort of classic Westfield structures, some mostly residential, also some office buildings located in there. So, you know, sort of the interesting thing about the property is, you know, its location sort of on the edge of downtown, and the diversity of structure types that surround it. So the actual meat of my presentation is going to focus on the plan and what's in the document, and I'm sure we'll talk about that as we go. So sort of high-level key points. The plan allows for up to 64 residential units to be constructed on the site, up to 64 units, requires 15% of those to be affordable if the project is for rent. 64, 15% of 64 is about 10, so if the project was built to 64, that'd be 10 affordable units. I should note that I don't have it on the slide, but it limits three-bedroom units. So the only three-bedroom units that can be created under the plan would be the affordable units, the required affordable units. In addition to the residential, which is really sort of the key component of the property, there are two other elements that are worth talking about. Up to 1,000 square feet of café or retail space along the corner. I intended to sort of activate that Ferris and Prospect corner, create an active ground floor, create some street life there. And then also importantly, I mentioned the historic structure previously. The plan requires that structure be converted into what we call an educational and cultural amenity, which is defined in the plan, and I'll talk about, again, a little more in a moment. Sort of the key building standards, and we'll look at a picture in a second, that's included in the plan. It's up to a four-story building, up to 50 feet tall, and 1.5 parking space is required per residential unit. Okay, so I have like five key points for the plan. The first one is historic preservation. We do redevelopment projects for a lot of different reasons. A key element of this project is the preservation and reuse of that historic structure that I showed you. This plan requires that structure to be maintained, to be restored, to be incorporated into the final project, and significantly, I think, it requires it to be converted into this educational and cultural amenity, which, again, we define in the plan, and I'll just read a little bit of the definition here, is defined as a nonprofit facility where elements of historic significance are preserved and presented for cultural and/or educational purposes. It's required to be publicly accessible, either by appointment or in scheduled times. And there are some sort of broad parameters in the plan for what you can't do there. Specifically, it can't be used for private parties or special events, so it's really intended for sort of some more small-scale educational experience. We will talk a lot about a redevelopment agreement, presumably throughout the course of the night and throughout the course of my presentation. There are two like really key components that the plan requires to be incorporated that relates to that structure. One is a protection plan. I think anytime we're dealing with historic preservation, we want to make sure that the building is properly preserved. We didn't feel the redevelopment plan was the right place to, you know, sort of describe in detail how that would happen. So the plan requires, as part of a redevelopment agreement, any redeveloper to submit a protection plan, which is going to detail how they're going to make sure the building lives, right? Secondly, reuse plan, like cultural spaces can be used in a variety of different functions. It depends a lot on community needs, stakeholder needs, who's there, who can program it. So the plan sets forth a process whereby a redeveloper needs to specify how the property's going to be reused, what the programming is going to be, what the needs are going to be, and things of that nature. Just a final point, because I know this has come up. The plan requires a redeveloper to follow the processes of the historic preservation ordinance in the town as it's currently written. So whatever they are, when they apply for a site plan application, that's what's going to apply. There's no sort of like workaround or exemptions built into the plan for historic consideration. On architecture, this is the conceptual building rendering which is included in the project. As was noted earlier, you know, you're not approving actually this specific project, should the council approve it, but you are approving a design vision and a set of design standards which are included in the plan, which I think are quite detailed, and this drawing is included in the plan. Some of the key points I just want to point out here, which are noted in the plan and are requirements. One, sort of focusing the massing of the building on this corner, on the corner of Ferris and Prospect, and then gradually tapering away. It's a little hard frankly to see in this rendering, but this three-story component of the building here, that's still our structure, so you can see how it starts at four stories on the corner, and then gradually tapers way up Prospect Street. Two, one of the things that was really important to us as we worked out these design standards was how to maintain a sense of residential accessibility along Prospect Street. What these are here is, these are actually three direct entry units that are encouraged along Prospect Street, that we would hammer down in the actual redevelopment agreement, sort of creating stoops, like creating a more walkable residential feel along Prospect Street, really a key component in designing a multifamily building of this size. Three, plan specifies building materials, very detailed building materials, brick, stone, things of that nature. And then I'll just, I'll also just mention, for the sake of it, one thing that I think is really interesting about the way this building is designed and the standards that are included in it is how the building is broken up along the street, and really how we tried to avoid creating like a long uninterrupted mass along Prospect Street. Sustainability, I know this is top of mind for folks, especially after Ida recently. You know, obviously, this project would result in an increase in coverage on the site, like that's just obvious, right? But we did try to, and I think somewhat, I think successfully incorporate measures in the, oh, sorry, measures in the plan that would mitigate that. The project does require an 8,000-square-foot green roof, so if you just look at the coverage percentages, they're going to look high. That green roof, which doesn't count against those percentages, is like almost 20% of the site. Bike parking required, EV parking required, other things of that nature. Parking, really sort of paramount, I think to the design of the building, is the location of that parking underground. That's a requirement of the plan. That hides it from sight, it minimizes the sort of negative impacts of parking while still providing sufficient parking to support the site. I'll note that the plan requires that parking entrance be along Ferris Place. Traffic and mobility, this came up earlier, but the plan is very explicit about the requirement for a traffic impact study to be provided to the town with the redevelopment agreement. It's very specific about what the purpose of that traffic impact study is. I put a bit of a quote here because I think it's important. The traffic impact study determines if infrastructure improvements will be necessary, and then that section of the plan specifically states that, you know, any improvements determined to be necessary by the town should be codified and put into a redevelopment agreement that would ultimately be executed. It also specifies these three intersections. These are critical intersections, especially Prospect Street and East Broad Street, which I know has been an underperforming location in the town for a while, and has been identified as such in your previous documents. I'll also note, it says that the traffic impact study will analyze at least those intersection. At a previous meeting, one of the council members suggested incorporating Clark and North Ave, so you know, it would be the council's discretion to include in that study additional intersections like that. You're certainly within your right to do so. Okay. Sure. You got it, yeah. So that's traffic. Another key component of design, sorry, and mobility for this project is creating like a really active streetscape and sidewalk, and creating sidewalk improvements. What we did there in the plan is just sort of pull the requirements from the master plan and incorporate those. Finally, this is my last slide before I go to the master plan. The redevelopment plan does include specific standards for landscaping, buffering, other sort of site design requirements. This is just a conceptual plan. This is not included in the redevelopment plan, this drawing that you have here, but this is a building that would be compliant under the standards. So my last section that I want to talk through, and I'll probably have another three minutes on this, is about the master plan. These projects should not come out of thin air. They should be grounded in the previous work and the previous sort of community priorities that you all have set forth. So, let's skip right through that. Luckily, you have a lot of guidance in your master plan for this project and for projects like it, and I'm going to start here with a very specific recommendation that you've included in your recently adopted master plan, which is simply to consider use of the powers contained within the local redevelopment and housing law to encourage appropriate redevelopment of the properties at the corner of Ferris Place and Prospect Street. These are the properties that we're talking about. So this was in the master plan from just a few months ago, but I'll note, and the timeline already came up, this was, a very similar recommendation was also included in the master plan reexamination, whatever that was, three years ago or so. So like the key word here is appropriate, right? And luckily, your master plan does include other guidelines, other pieces of guidance to help us understand what appropriate might be. So the master plan does include this community forum plan, map of which I've included here, and you see our properties here outlined in teal. These properties are identified as being in this Elm Street District subarea, and it has a very relatively detailed description of what would be appropriate for those properties, including accommodating four-story mixed-use buildings, like we have in this document, active ground floor uses, upper floor residential uses that would add to the economic vitality of downtown, noting that it's important to the design how parking is provided, which I believe the redevelopment plan you're considering sort of goes as far as possible in that regard by putting the parking underground and, okay, and requiring streetscape improvements in the area. So in addition to those community forum recommendations, there are also some very specific land use and redevelopment recommendations that are included in the master plan, which I've placed on the screen and which I think we also have incorporated into the redevelopment plan. So exploring the opportunity to create public spaces, like the amenity areas that are called for in the redevelopment plan, as well as the educational space, ground floor retail, taking into consideration the recommendations of the parking element of your master plan, exploring architectural design guidelines, other things of that nature, and exploring, utilizing streetscape improvements like are called for in the master plan. So we find that our redevelopment plan is really consistent with these very specific recommendations. There's also, and so I'm sort of getting more general now, very general goals that you've included in your master plan, which I think are also reflected in your redevelopment plan. I won't go through each of these individually, but I'll just sort of flag, you know, in the first one, it says standards that are appropriate for the various zones and uses in the community. And again, I think that word appropriate is key, and I think that the guidance in the community forum plan is helpful for us to understand what appropriate means in that regard. You know, a lot of these goals are about the viability of the central business district. Again, this property sits on the edge of the central business district, and I think redevelopment of the nature contemplated would support the viability of that. Lastly, on this slide, you know, the plan speaks specifically to rezoning for mixed use or residential uses within walking distance of the CBD and transit. I'm a little over time, so I'm not going to walk through each of these individually, but we talk in the master plan about historic sites, affordable housing, sustainable practices, and addressing underutilized or vacant sites. and addressing underutilized or vacant sites. I do want to hit on a couple of your guiding principles, which I think are relevant. I'm just going to touch on three. Number one, "As we grow, we will strive to preserve the attributes of our unique hometown, identity, the beauty of our natural environment, and the strengths of our neighborhoods, while lessening the adverse effects of growth." I think utilizing the redevelopment process in the way that you're potentially doing this evening gives you a good opportunity to accomplish that principle, to lessen the adverse impacts of growth while growing. Number eight, "We realize that architectural and land use design is fundamental to our identity." I think the design standards included in this plan are reflective of that. And number eleven, speaking to a sort of long-term economic growth. So finally, and this is my last slide, you know, you, to sort of start at the end, like you set forth in your master plan a vision for Westfield, speaking to the downtown and sort of areas around the downtown. Westfield will be a model of carefully managed development, providing a range of housing options within walking distance to the downtown, maintaining high-quality, stable, single-family neighborhoods, and abundant recreational and cultural opportunities. And downtown Westfield will be the heartbeat of your community, pedestrian-oriented and mixed-use center with a variety of housing choices, preserving and celebrating the town's history and architecture, and providing housing, tree-lined streets, plazas, parks, and things for residents' enjoyment. So, I apologize if I was sort of rattling through that too quickly, but thank you for listening, and I'm sure we'll have a spirited discussion as we go throughout the evening. Thank you.
So I just want to let everybody know, we go through a couple hearings and unrelated to this, but that'll come up in a few minutes, so just sit tight, and then there'll be an opportunity for a public comment. So, Mrs. Rowley, do we have any advertised hearings? Here you are.
Yes, Mayor, there are several advertised hearings tonight. The first is a community development block grant application for Adult Special Needs Program, Westfield YMCA, in the amount of $56,000. Anyone wishing to be heard on this application, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, mayor, may close the hearing.
Hearing is closed.
Second is community development block grant application for outdoor recreational renovations, Westfield YMCA, in the amount of $55,250. Anyone wishing to be heard on this application, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, mayor, may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
Third is community development block grant application for Senior Transportation and Programming, Town of Westfield Recreation Department, in the amount of $10,000. Anyone wishing to be heard on this application, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, mayor, may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
The fourth is community development block grant application for ADA-compliant doors and curb cutout, Town of Westfield Recreation Department, in the amount of $15,000. Anyone wishing to be heard on this application, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, mayor, may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
And the fifth is community development block grant application for roof-and-gym windows, Westfield Community Center, in the amount of $45,000. Anyone wishing to be heard on this application, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And seeing no one, mayor, may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
The next is hearing for General Ordinance Number 2230, and ordinance to amend General Ordinance Number 2154, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Town Officers and Employees, Division 3, Personnel Positions and Salary Schedule, Section 2-12.28 Schedule." Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance 2230, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, mayor, may close the hearing.
This hearing is closed.
And the last public hearing is for General Ordinance Number 2231, an ordinance adopting the Prospect and Ferris redevelopment plan. Anyone wishing to be heard on General Ordinance Number 2231, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
And mayor, if I might, just to note on the public hearing on General Ordinance 2231, as you know, mayor, council members have an obligation to recuse themselves on any manner in which they hold a reasonable belief that their objectivity or independence of judgment might be impaired. So two council members have made that determination. The overwhelming majority of local government lawyers would say not only should those who are recusing not vote on the matter, but they also shouldn't participate in discussion, and in fact, should even leave the room. So the two members who have decided to recuse themselves, if you can excuse yourselves now.
And I'm just going to ask, since I think you have a lot of people that want to comment, if you could just keep your comments to three minutes so that we could give as many people an opportunity to speak as possible. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Susan Furman. I reside at 111 Prospect Street, otherwise known as the Savannah. I'm joined by several neighbors from my building, if you'll just raise your hands. Even though I'm an academic, I'm not here to talk technical issues about the study or redevelopment plan issues. I just want to speak of my lived experience as a Savannah resident for the last five years, living a half a block from the proposed development. We park in our underground garage. As we attempt to exit, we are faced by parked trucks unloading goods for restaurants and stores on Broad Street, limiting the turning radius for us to exit the building and turn one way or another. This happens all day long into the early evening. We can rarely turn right. Frequently, there's a line of cars waiting to make a left onto Broad Street, blocking our egress, and if we are able to join that line, we often face a very long wait to make that extremely difficult left. If we turn left out of our garage, we confront the ins and outs of cars from municipal parking, and then what seems like an endless circle of cars exiting and then re-entering the Trader Joe's lot, waiting for others to vacate so they can park. In other words, traffic is unbearable, and the thought of adding to it is unacceptable, to say the least. Then there's safety. You may not know this, but in 2014, a woman was killed at Prospect and Caputh Way. This is not just a car issue, it's a pedestrian issue as well. Recently, two residents in our building were struck by cars. One of them never really recovered and died just a few weeks later, Arlene Roden, who lived on my floor. Pedestrian traffic is already heavy. People are walking back and forth from Trader Joe's and the municipal lot, and middle schoolers from Roosevelt are streaming into town, especially, but not just, on Fridays and half-days. Little children heading to preschool at the Methodist Church School or to the Y, and churchgoers also populate Ferris Place. The new construction is anticipated to have an exit onto Ferris Place. That seems no less suitable for additional traffic than Prospect. It's very possible that the proposed construction, while providing for more cars than any of us want to see, added to our already busy neighborhood, would still result in demands for additional street parking. Where would they go? Where would people visiting the café or the historic center park? The thought of a project this size literally terrifies us. It's quite clear that the problems go beyond quick fixes like a potential traffic light on Broad or better control of Trader Joe's parking lot, but involve multiple streets and car, truck, and pedestrian traffic. Going forward, we're asking for traffic, safety, and density studies, and studies of the adequacy of all aspects of the town's infrastructure. Of course, at this point, we're just here to register our opposition to the initial plan in the strongest terms possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paul LeWinter, and I reside at the Chelmsford at 260.
I'm sorry, what's your last name again?
LeWinter, L-E-W-I-N-T-E-R. When I come out of the Chelmsford, the logical way for me to drive to get in the center of town would be to turn left, which goes past the entrance to Trader Joe's. But I never do that, because whenever I have done that, I run into traffic situations where people are lined up trying to get into the entrance of Trader Joe's, and there's another car coming this way, so I can't circumvent it. So I have to absolutely agree with the former speaker that the traffic problem is intolerable. What I need to do when I come out of my building, I have to go right, and then right again, and then right again, to get some driving space. The other point I would like to make about the presentation we just had, one can't help but notice that all the pictures, lovely photographs that they were, were taken from Trader Joe's. None of them were taken the other way around, which shows the street and the congestion and the parking, which is always congested at Trader Joe's. So while I have no objection to the building itself, the traffic there is unbearable, and I would respectfully request that you consider not approving this project based on the traffic that would occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Joellen Bard, and I also live at the Chelmsford. And I've been dealing for the last 15 years that I'm living here with the traffic problem, which is really unbearable. Not only can't we see to get out of our driveway, but you really cannot get past Trader Joe's. The question I ask is, is there an evacuation plan for the Town of Westfield? I'm sure there must be. I don't think we could get out of Prospect Street, and I don't think a fire engine can get in. Direct route, I mean, they're right on Prospect, but no way could they get through that. This is incessant problem. I also see that the only solution to the traffic problem is not only a light on the corner of Prospect and East Broad, but also one on Ferris and Clark. Not on North Avenue, but on Ferris and Clark, because if you ever go down that street to the Y, to the parking lot from the Y, you cannot make a left-hand turn because the cars are coming towards north down Clark Street. You cannot turn over there. I don't know how you solve these problems, but I feel that a traffic study should be done before you even entertain the rest of this project, because I'm also not against the building there, but I think it's much too big a project for that place.
Thank you, Joan.
Hi, I'm Ina Giardina, G-I-A-R-D-I-N-A, and I live in Cranford at the moment, but I own the property with my husband, Richard, directly across the street from this proposed site at 212 Prospect Street. It is a Victorian house, and it is a rental at the moment, but we plan to retire there, I would say, in the next several years, because we would be able to walk to all the stores in Westfield, we wouldn't have to drive a car, like that. So, we bought this house 20 years ago with this long-range plan of retiring there, and in the midst of doing that, we've spent major money upkeeping a house from 1861. Lincoln was president at the time. The house required major, major renovations to stabilize it. The porch was drooping. Everything needed attention. The chimneys were restored. The siding, I had men outside planing the wood so it would match the original siding. This is a long-range plan that we have had, and I am amazed at several things, namely, I learned of this project by reading the Westfield Leader. I was not informed of this. I didn't get a notice of this from the town. It's amazing that this could go to three meetings, and someone directly across the street owning a property wouldn't know of it. It's unfathomable. It's frightening. It feels illegal. So that's one aspect of my concern. The other aspect is, the gentleman who made his presentation did not show any of the residential properties on the other side of this proposed structure. All of us have a setback of about 30 feet. Where's the setback for this property? This does not match Westfield. It may be a great moneymaker for the town, but those of us on the avenue on Prospect Street, this is not what we bargained for when we bought there. It was zoned for one- and two-family structures. I'm just floored, and I hope you consider this, and I hope, I wish some of you lived on Prospect Street. You may have the feeling of what we're considering right now, we're just, I can't tell you how upsetting this is. Thank you for listening.
My name is Christian Cedrkvist, C-E-D-E-R-Q-V-I-S-T. I live on Cowperthwaite, 119 specifically, and taking similar tracks than the nice young lady that just spoke, I grew up in New York City, so I get it. I know what, you know, building in general feels like, spent over 30 years there. And when, you know, you move to Westfield, one thing that was appealing is that your blood pressure immediately goes down when you come working from the city, and you have these grass-lined streets going up Prospect. And as you go, your blood pressure goes down as you walk up, and, you know, the Savannah itself is kind of encroaching, but that be as it may, that was here before I moved here. But I've redone my house a couple times, and we're always restricted by, I can't even go a foot towards the street, even if I have like 40 feet. And there's a variant, so I'd have to ask every neighbor if I need, or required to do anything. So, but I could accept that, because it is what it is, it's the character of the neighborhood. And in addition, there's a covenant between us and our neighbors and the laws that exist, that if I abide by them, my neighbors will, and that's the covenant that the Town of Westfield and you all that were elected to serve us, not people in Union County, not people in New Jersey State, not people in the federal government, you work for State, not people in the federal government. You work for us, and the covenant was that you were going to protect that, and we just want you to consider that when voting for this. And I don't know what the interests are involved, but we have to bring it back to us, and so I don't want you to break that covenant. In addition, just the style, I know that's just a concept. This is taste. I'm not a, you know, a connoisseur, but it looks like that architect has schizophrenia, because[631.79][631.79][laughter] because I understand in academic--
I'm sorry, you guys, please, let's just maintain some decorum, please.
I understand that in some academic circumstances, you can have some creative things that are conceptual, but if I were living right next door to it, and I have this wall of a building that's four stories that goes right up to the sidewalk, I'd be upset, too. Now, I don't want to stop any project or every project, it's just the scale of the project. I don't care the nature of the residents. It could be, you know, all dedicated to disabled. It could be 80% low-income. That's not my real gripe here. It's the character and the size of it. If there was something, you know, that was a little bit smaller, that's acceptable. You know, I've seen initiatives in the city and worked with people actually driving them that have sustainability, green spaces on roofs. They worked for two years, and they don't longer exist, so to expect that would actually continue is maybe, I don't see, that's not happened before. So I think that's a good attribute on a checkmark on a spreadsheet, but it's really not realistic, I don't think, in my opinion. So bottom line, to sum up is, if you build something great, just have it away from the sidewalk a little bit, have a little grass in between, have setback, have maybe a little bit smaller scale. I don't have a gripe of the nature of what, who occupies that. It's really the scale, and, you know, maybe someone with a little bit more talent architecturally. Thank you
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Town Staff, and my fellow residents, a lot of whom have spoken very eloquently tonight about this project. Ted Ritter, 710 North Avenue West, Ward 1. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight about this proposal at Prospect and Ferris. You know, I think if I had to boil it down to just, you know, one sentence, just because the town's redevelopment plan says it's possible to do something, it doesn't mean this project is right for this particular location.[776.01][776.01][applause] In short, I think, and it was solidified when I saw the presentation from Topology tonight, that this is the wrong type of proposed redevelopment for here. And I urge the mayor and council to strongly oppose the project as it stands now, based on facts and measurable criteria, which are super easy to identify here. Redevelopment at this location, it's a nice piece of property. It should warrant a dramatically scaled-down proposal, given the size of the property. We have plenty of room to do something really cool there, create something that really fits in with the surrounding properties in this neighborhood, my neighborhood. I walk and bike there all the time, especially in the last couple of days, trying to picture how this monstrosity is going to work in that tight geometry and context. It just, it just doesn't work. A project like the one proposed looks like something you'd see in New Brunswick, or maybe even certain parts of Summit, but I don't think about Westfield. It looks like it belongs in more of an urbanized corridor. And despite being on the periphery of the downtown, one of my neighbors spoke about this, yeah, this neighborhood is on the periphery, but it does retain that sort of quaint old Westfield feel. It's not an urban corridor. It's certainly not blighted, and it certainly doesn't need to be redeveloped. It can be, as long as I think it's done context-sensitive. And I think the other thing is the traffic study. You know, I wish that had been done sooner. I don't know that we'd be this far along if, I don't think it takes an expert, an engineer, or whatever, to determine that we have a serious traffic problem here. Ferris Place, where you want to put the entrance to this redevelopment, is a one-way street, super narrow. It looks like it was built, well, when it was built, a long time ago. It's historic. It's a quiet neighborhood. The other element of this that I really can't even fathom is the fact that you want to put ground-floor retail in this building. We have a serious problem with retail in our downtown.[898.01][898.01][applause] My barber shop is on Prospect Street, and he's struggling to stay in business. We're going to put more retail further away from the downtown when we have downtown businesses that we can't sustain. I think that's a, that's a big mistake. Maybe there could be something, but again, really should be, I think, scaled down. I'm in favor of redevelopment in general, even in Westfield. There are many, many locations, I think, in our town that I'd be really fired up and excited to see redeveloped, and I think something like this could work in a different context, say like on the busy South Avenue corridor, North Avenue corridor, places that could support this type of development.
Your three minutes is about, are you almost wrapped up?
Yeah, I'll just wrap up. Redevelopment is supposed to be good for the town and good for the neighborhood it's in, and the town as a whole. It shouldn't just benefit a developer or a certain segment, and this project doesn't meet that standard as it's proposed. So let's not hide behind the redevelopment plan, and let's make sure we make a good decision for this property. Thank you.[961.63][961.63][applause]
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Francesco Cobertaldo. I will spend three minutes in just spelling my last name, so it's C-R-L. I bring a different perspective, obviously, because I'm not a resident, so I can, obviously don't understand and don't know all the aspects of the town, or living in the town, because I just own a business on East Broad Street. I picked Westfield four years ago was just a, my idea was just a concept, something on paper, something on a business plan, because I saw in Westfield an express potential. I saw, I picked Westfield over a lot of other towns, Summit, Milburn, Moncler, because I truly loved the community without knowing much about it, and I never regretted the idea of my decision, because we've been, I embraced the town, and I was embraced back. So when I see development and I see opportunity, obviously, is my vision is skewed, because I'm a businessman, so I'm looking at growth as a potential for everybody. I'm looking at something that is new, as bringing more traffic to the town, as increasing the opportunity for people to share with other people that want to live in this town, and share the values, and share the beauty that this town has to offer, and that I've seen and witnessed firsthand. So that's why my perspective is skewed, and it's the one of a businessman. And as a businessman, I, you know, I would love to have my guests finding space to live when they're visiting in town, finding parking. I would love to see more business coming to town and not leaving. Again, that's the sad part of what I witnessed in the three years that I've been here. I've seen businesses closing their doors. I'd love to see more business open their doors. I'd like to see more people, more traffic. So that's, in essence, why I'm favorable to a development, because I see that as an opportunity. And again, I repeat, this is not a resident. I'm just a, I feel like a privileged guest of this town, because I just own a business. I don't own a residence. Thank you.
Thank you. And a great business, too, I might add.
Hi, my name is Ed Korecki from 207 Charles Street in Ward 1, where this project that we're discussing is going to, is proposed to take place. I would like to thank everybody on the council, the mayor, for your efforts to try to revitalize our downtown. I think this effort may be a step too far, and I'll echo the prior residents on the scale, I believe, is larger than it needs to be for an area that the planner had said is a transition area. We're talking about an area with one and two-family homes, two and a half stories, and we want to add a four-and-a-half-story building, okay, 64 units. Our downtown has three-story buildings. The transition area is larger than the downtown as far as its scale. It doesn't make sense to me as an area that should be considered transition, okay? It's too dense. Obviously, the traffic, we've heard a lot about the traffic, okay? Secondly, my second point is the property itself, okay? I've been around town for over 40 years and walked by that site three, four times a week. That site has deteriorated over the last 10 to 15 years.[1206.83][1206.83][applause] Has not been maintained by the owner, and has not been tried to be utilized, as the other properties adjoining it have been successfully, okay? I feel what we're potentially doing is setting a precedent, if this goes forward, of finding a develop, seeing a developer acquire, ignore, allow deteriorate, and then apply for rehabilitation, a kind of access to that property.[1244.65][1244.65][applause] They could have improved and utilized and not gotten to the state where it is today. And I hope you take that into consideration. I do thank you for the service you provide to our community.
Thank you.[1259.51][1259.51][applause]
Hi, I'm Lori Korecki, and I don't always get the last word.
Ah.
Also living at 207 Charles Street, and I, 43 years, we've walked past the intersection of Ferris Place and Prospect, or Driven, and as all of the previous well-spoken residents have mentioned, it is a traffic jam already. And I, too, question the need for a traffic study. I think you don't need to have, I am not an engineer, I'm not an expert, but I'm a pedestrian and I'm a driver. And I also have had a neighbor, the neighbor who was mentioned, who was struck and killed on Prospect Street by a car. It's a busy place. It was developed centuries ago, the small streets. Ferris Place is one-way, and as Dr. Furman mentioned, Ferris Place is now a place where there is a drop-off for schoolchildren, young schoolchildren, preschool, elementary, school buses parked there, drop-off for preschool and after-school. Also, in the summer, there, the Y has a camp program also with the buses dropping off
[coughs]
children walking. Directly across the street is the United Methodist Church, which also has a preschool, and their staff and their congregants. It is a busy thoroughfare for a one-way street, and I absolutely cannot contemplate or visualize 90 vehicles, more vehicles, entering that street, and then trying to traverse that busy intersection of Clark and Ferris. I am here to thank you also for your service, and I know it's not easy. I've been a volunteer most of my adult life, or have worked with volunteers. This is a very difficult situation you're in, and I know you only want to improve our town, but we here are people who live in the area, and I know you're going to have experts, but believe me, we are the experts.[1428.11][1428.11][applause] I, too, want to see this town improved, particularly the downtown. Again, I've lived here for 43 years. I have no intention of leaving, and my youngest daughter just bought her home here. We love Westfield, and we want the town and the downtown to thrive. I don't understand how we can add more retail outside of our struggling merchants and businesses who are downtown, and add a cafe when we want people to go to Vicki's and Boxwoods and Rockin' Joe's, and those people who have hung in there even throughout COVID. Why present more competition for them? And I don't need to talk about the massive structure and the lack of frontage and greenery. It's already been addressed, but, and I may be duplicating what others have said, but I'm very emotional and feel very strongly about this project. First, let me tell you, I am thrilled about it being redeveloped. It was an eyesore for so many years, and dragged the residential area down. It was neglected. And now we are, we are, I feel like, are we rewarding the neglect?
Ms. Kreck, your time is up, so thank you.
Okay, I'm very sorry.
No, no, no worries. Thank you, though, for your comments.
Thank you for your time.[1538.01][1538.01][applause]
Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Dalguez. I live at 240 Clark Street, right around the corner. My first question is, this is to group up here. Why do we never know about what's going on? This is the third meeting about this. Like the other woman said, how do you communicate to the people in Westfield about these things? Why do I not know until the third meeting that this is actually happening? Where am I supposed to pick the information up, from the Westfield leader? Where? Where do we get it from? That's the first thing. The second thing is, on one of the slides, you said that this, you try to do something that's going to match. This has no match for that street. This building has no match. Then what we're trying to do is, we're trying to tell them we're going to put a green roof on. Is that supposed to make us feel good, a green roof?[1598.01][1598.01][laughter] Like, the building does not match Prospect Street whatsoever. So in my opinion, I just don't understand how we could push something like this through. The other thing I think that's going on in Westfield, I've been in Westfield about 22 years, is they'll take an old house, look at it, and say, you know what, it's not worth anything anymore. We'll knock it down. We'll do something. The same thing's happening here. We're getting some kind of story that we're going to restore this old house that's there to use for, I don't know, people go in and look at it. I have no idea. The project, what they're talking about, doesn't seem to be useful whatsoever. They're just giving us something to make us feel good, a green roof. We can go into this other building, plus the building that they're building is ugly. It's not even a good-looking building.[1653.13][1653.13][applause] It doesn't match anything in Westfield, nothing. It should be maybe out where the warehouses are, maybe. But anyhow, that's just my own opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1664.91][1664.91][applause]
Hello, Vaden Road, 111 Cowperthwaite, please. I've been in this neighborhood for about 20 years. Love the neighborhood. Walk this corner intersection quite often when my dog was still alive, you know, three times a day. I'm kind of particular about my walks, and I walk past this property. You know, I think it needs to be redeveloped. I don't, I'm not against redevelopment. I just think the scale of this project seems way out of line with, you know, what's appropriate for our neighborhood. We are a neighborhood, you know, we have block parties, you know, we know each other. I know this is a transitional area, but you can't tell me you're going to put the biggest building on the north side or something like that right there. It's not in the downtown. It's moving away. There's, you know, single-family homes. I'm also a little concerned about, you know, conducting any traffic study during COVID. You know, the Y is not running most of their programs. You can't attend them as a parent. They canceled their before and after care, so people are now dropping off their kids in the morning, picking them up in the afternoon. So a true traffic study would not account for things like this right now. It's a busier street than it would present itself currently. So I'm also concerned about kind of an area being in play, and what I mean by it is that when we first moved to Westfield, we lived on Prospect Street and in a rental, in a duplex, and a beautiful Victorian that was kind of neglected and was a rental, all of a sudden was bought by a developer, the Valanys, and they built a duplex on that property. And that kind of made our neighborhood what I call like in-play, because that was replicated over and over again. Now we have five or six of these structures. They're fine. They're better in certain cases than what was there. In certain cases, they're worse. Certainly, the people who move into them are lovely. I'm sure this is going to be the case for this particular development. But we need to consider what signal we send to the rest of the potential developers. I know that there's a three-- I know that there's a three-unit parcel down that street that the YMCA owns. What stops them from saying like, well, we don't need this anymore. Let's build another huge development there. It's probably bigger than this particular parcel. So I just want to make sure we, as a town, as we grow and apply this master plan future, we do so with some sort of context of what we actually want to do, right? This is what we use as documents, kind of like our interpretation of it. You know, this gentleman did a nice job interpreting it, but I want to make sure that we collectively think and you collectively listen to our feedback as a neighborhood as to what's appropriate there. I'm not opposed to this development or the growth there, but let's consider how big and what type, you know? If you could involve the Historic Preservation Commission as far as the finishes, as far as, you know, the windows that are used in this particular development, I'd be all for it, maybe. You know, I don't, I understand there's expenses involved, but I think something that's in line with what Westfield character is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Coralton Road on the south side. I have family on Stanmore Place, and I own a condo at Copperweight Square. So I'm up and down these streets a lot. I see the traffic. You heard a lot of testimony tonight about the traffic. I know last night when I spoke, I was told, okay, we're going to do a traffic study, but it's down the road. So last night, we approved this as meeting the master plan, and I'm in favor of the master plan. I think it's great that the town has put the effort into that. But the effort that we put into that seems to have led to us bringing a consultant in. And we asked the consultant to look at this particular plot and what do we need to do with this? And what did the consultant back, come back with? It's good. My experience with consultants is they often come back with the answers they think you want to hear. So I'm asking you to be a little bit careful about that. And I really think you need to, with the streets that are there, the one-way, the narrow street, the traffic that's there now, you really need to look to change the order of things and do the traffic study now before you get too far down the road. Because if you get too far down the road, you can still cancel the project. But sometimes momentum takes over and it goes through. That's my worry. I think that's what a lot of people are worried about.
I reside at 1120 Prospect Street in Westfield. I also own a building at 112 Prospect Street, Westfield, half a block away from the redevelopment project. Also own property on East Broad Street. The former chairman of the Downtown Westfield Corporation and helped to form the Main Street Organization in town. I'm a lifelong Westfielder, having been born here 70 years ago, and I remember when there was no Chelmsford. I remember when there was an open stream between the A&amp;P and the town's parking lot that was gravel with broken barricades, okay? Things change. And my brother passed away a couple of hours ago, but I thought it's so important to be here because of my experience of coming to these meetings dozens and dozens over the years, when the naysayers are the ones who come out, the negative souls who don't believe in change or understand change. There's a famous Broadway show, The Music Man. Pool, pool! Pool is the dangerous game. It's going to pervert society. Under Mayor, former Mayor Tom Jardim, I worked with Marty Robbins. We had a redevelopment plan for parking. If those plans had been implemented under Tom, these parking problems, parking and traffic problems on Prospect would have been mitigated. Under Mayor McDermott, we had a originally three-deck proposal that changed to two, that changed to one, that changed to none, with parking, with multi-dollars spent by the municipality on studies after studies and brownfield redevelopment. And if those programs had have been implemented, it would be a different situation traffic-wise and business-wise in town. This development, if anybody has read or studied at all about urban planning, suburban planning, look at surrounding communities, even if you don't like Summit, even if you don't like Morristown, even if you don't like Montclair. The density of housing and population in those towns for years is closer to the core. If you go downtown Union today, which has been a basket case for the last 15 to 20 years with five or six of these type projects within two blocks of their core downtown, they're seeing a major redevelopment in downtown Union. This is not Union, and we don't ever expect this town to be Union. We want it to be Westfield. We had Mayor M. Thomas, who made Westfield colonial Westfield. The only thing Mayor Thomas did for colonialization of Westfield was to put wooden sheiks on the front of stores architecturally, which had nothing to do with the colonial era. And it's taken us 30 years to remove those wooden sheiks.
Mr. Spector, you're almost out of time.
Right. Change is, can be a positive thing, and change is what's needed in Westfield. And what I look for, and, look, I know that Jim Ward and his people, I, you know, talked to him over the years, are quality people who are interested, they live in town, and he's changed his plan to try to accommodate many of the, most, I guess, all of the requirements that the Redevelopment Committee, the Planning Board, and so forth have come up with. And it is up to this council and the boards to show leadership and strength and not pander to a loud crowd who won't be here in five to 10 years.
Your time is short. Hey, 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 everybody, come on, stop. Stop. Come on, stop. And your time is up. I'm sorry. So, but thank you. And stop.
Do you want to be here in here?
I'm sorry.
I'm delighted to follow that. My name is Jay Boyle. My family moved to Westfield in 1951 when I was three, so you can do math on that. We're getting a little bit older. We had a house on Dorian Road. My wife and I sold in 2018, and we moved to Cranford. And we moved to Cranford because there were apartments that we wanted to rent. New, modern, spacious, really very nice. But what we were looking for, which really didn't exist in Westfield at that time, it really didn't. There were condos. The Savannah was condos. We wanted to just rent for a while till we figured out what we were doing. During my time in Westfield, I was the chairman of the Westfield Planning Board. Planning, I recused myself from all the votes and all the discussions because I was friends with James and John Ward, so I really backed off of all of those discussions. That Planning Board approved the Savannah and the James Ward Mansion during that period of time. What I recall, and what I believe is the truth, is they will listen to you. They will listen, they will do what needs to be done, they will follow the direction of the Planning Board, all of the redevelopment people involved in this. This is a long, long process. And I believe this is one night of listening. There's a lot of, lot of things that have to get done. They listen, they're very careful about what they do, they want the best for everybody, and I think that that's what we need to assume is going to happen here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyle. Hey, please, come on. Come on, everybody. Okay.
Matt Lipsky.
Please, please.
Matt Lipsky. I live at 227 Prospect Street, which is about three houses down from this proposed building. I'm Matt Lipsky. I live at 227 Prospect Street, which is about three houses down from this proposed development. I was here last night at the Planning Board meeting, and I was listening very closely to the presentation earlier, and there are a few very specific things that I want to call out that I think warrant consideration. First things first, there's a lot of general language in the plan around preservation of the historic building on that property, but it doesn't show up in the renderings, and I haven't seen any specificity around what the plan is for that building. It would be good to understand, is it being relocated? Is it being incorporated inside of a building? I think that's important context for people to hear. The second thing that I noted is that the provision around the traffic study seems to indicate that the result of the traffic study would impact remediation of the street or proposed changes to the street, but not to the building. It doesn't, it doesn't read to me like that suggesting that the result of the traffic study would be to potentially have fewer units in the building. It sounds like it's all about changes to the street and just, you know, living there and walking there every day. I just don't see the space for that. So it'd be good to understand specifically what could be done as a result of that traffic study before making a decision. The third is if you look at the Elm Street District, for which the master plan sort of incorporates this property, the entire district is a contiguous space except for this property, which is across the street. It almost looks like somebody sort of drew it in to make sure that this plan can be approved under those provisions, which is not consistent with what you see for the rest of the block. A couple of other points. Last night, we heard a lot about this being a transitional block and the sort of shift from downtown into more a single-family neighborhood. And I made the point last night that this building would actually be larger than anything that you encounter coming from downtown, with the exception of the Savannah. On my walk with my dog and from the train today, I actually looked. I counted the height of every single building. There are no four-story buildings between the train on Prospect and our block, except for the Savannah. Every tall building in the area, including the Y, including the Westfield arms, is set back significantly from the street. Even the Savannah has a rather, even though it's right up at the sidewalk, it has a rather significant courtyard. So this building would be much more up against the sidewalk than anything else in that area. So I just kind of don't understand how it's part of a transition from downtown to suburban if it is actually bigger. It seems like it's going in the opposite direction. The last point that I want to make is that when you look at the pictures that were included in the presentation, you see a lot of the sort of larger buildings that are in the area. If you look down our street, what you actually see is a large number of historic Victorian homes that people have put a tremendous amount of work into preserving because we want to live in a neighborhood that is walkable, that is close to downtown, and that has the historic charm of Westfield. And people take a tremendous amount of pride in it, and you can see that there's sort of continuous development of people rehabilitating those homes and sort of keeping them in line with the historic feel of the street. And the rendering that we saw just doesn't align to that. Thank you.
My name is Bart Schillman. I live at 165 East Broad Street in Westfield. I've lived in Westfield for three and a half years, and the depressing part of living in this wonderful town is the amount of vacancies relative to the stores in Westfield. And I think the best is the enemy of the good relative to be able to develop this wonderful project that's going to add 64 more families with underground parking, people who will be able to walk through Westfield. The thing that I most enjoyed was the vitality and the street traffic. We're going to add 64 more families with this construction to support the businesses in Westfield. And I think that is the major consideration I would like to point out to this board. The best is the enemy of the good. There's, in any town, anchor town like Westfield, there's a multitude of problems that started way before this project was underway. And this project is not going to detract from or add to these problems that have to be solved, specifically parking, the ability not to provide enough parking so these shops can have more foot traffic, more walking while it's in town to support the town. And the best, in my opinion, is the enemy of the good, and I wholeheartedly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Roseanne Christie, a 30-year resident of Westfield. Last, in 2016, I had the good fortune of being able to move downtown to 159 East Broad Street. And what I can tell you is, I used to be one of those cars that would circle the Trader Joe's parking lot. Now I park exactly on the Ferris Prospect property. That's where my parking spot is, and I can tell you, I hardly move my car. I spend more money downtown than I ever have since 2016. I get most of my meals downtown. I work from my apartment now because my company has gone hybrid. So I know from reading some of the literature that this building will also provide spaces for people who are going to do remote work. That means they're going to be in town day in, day out. That means they're going to be getting lunch at Ferrinolio and Sweet Waters and all of the other places in town. That means they're going to patronize Berenj drugstore, the new Westfield drugstore. To me, that's important for the vitality of the town, and I can only speak from my experience of how much more I spend in town because I live downtown.
Thank you.
My name is Audrey Fishman-Moore. I live at 111 Prospect. I'm a relatively new owner at the Savannah. I don't really need to reiterate what everyone has said about their concerns about the traffic, the congestion, the inability to go on the street. All of that has been, is redundant. I would like to just ask a couple of questions about what I saw in this gentleman's presentation because it was, maybe I misunderstood some of the things he said, but one of the things that concerned me about his presentation was when he talked about what the building was actually going to be, a rental most probably. I thought that it was 100% a rental, so, and your consideration for your master plan and all of the redevelopment that goes along with it and all of the requirements of the developer are based on him designing this building as a rental, I am presuming. But I was not comfortable with his presentation just now, which left open the possibility that this building may not be a rental, and therefore, all of the qualifications that you're going to put on potentially voting for this building may in fact not happen if he ends up making it a condo. So I would just like somebody to, in the, look into that and, you know, clearly define what it is that you are voting on, because it didn't seem clear to me. The other thing that I just want to comment on was three gentlemen before me who talked about the only four-story building is the Savannah, but, and that this new building would be the same. The Savannah's 35 apartments. It's not 64. They are all two-bedrooms. There are no three-bedrooms in the building. There's a limit to how many people can occupy that building based on it being a 55 and over community. And with our parking underground, we don't have enough parking spaces. We've had issues with the parking underneath, and I'm not really sure how for 64 units, some of which will be three bedrooms, and it's not going to be age-restricted, so you're not going to be limiting, if it's a rental, how many people can be in there, how 90 parking spaces are going to accommodate that, and what the town plans to do with the overflow for all the parking. So, that's really all.
Sharon Stockwell, 100 Nelson Place. I'm here tonight to comment on the project at Prospect and Ferris Place. I live in the neighborhood. I am one street behind where this project is being proposed. And during the time that I've lived here for 20 years, I have worked on several different issues regarding historic houses in our neighborhood. And I have worked many times to save historic homes in the Ward One area, usually not very successful. We have lost many historic homes in Ward One to new construction. I am in favor of the concept of this project. I appreciate that the builder wants to preserve and restore the 1720 historic home on that property. I know that property very, very well. My friend Rodica owned that house for several years prior to moving to another state. I've been in that house many, many times and actually enjoy going in that house because I'm one of the few people that can walk through the doorways without having to bend down because they- down because they are all built very short for back in the 1700s. And it's a unique property, and I believe that it is worth saving. And I also feel that there are some other unique concepts in this project, and I really think that this could actually be an opportunity for the town to not only save this property, this historic building, but also the possibility of looking at the traffic and the flow of the traffic and the intersection of East Broad and Prospect, which has been such a problem for such a long time. Instead of taking a micro view of this, maybe looking at expanding out more and taking a macro view of it, because I think the neighborhood in general needs to be evaluated. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan DeRose. I live at 3 Bradson Court. I'm a downtown property owner. I'm also a former chair and vice-chair of the DWC. We've lived in town for a little under 30 years. The new master plan, created over two years with a lot of public input, encourages live at work developments in or near the town core. It was determined, and I agree, that these types of developments are necessary for our downtown to thrive. This plan encompasses all that the master plan envisioned and encouraged. It does so, not just in my opinion, but as determined by the 10-0 vote of the planning board last night. In addition, it preserves an historical structure, another goal of this council. In my opinion, its proposed facade and design is attractive and will be an enhancement to the area. Since this is not the final vote for shovels in the ground, it will be inappropriate to stop the process at this point. The specific concerns residents have expressed tonight can be addressed later in this process. I believe it should be--
Hey, please.
May I finish?
Please.
I believe it should be approved tonight, allowing that process to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Doug Miller. I live at 619 Carlton Road. I'm a 38-year resident of the town. My comments relate to two issues, both of which have been touched on by everyone preceding me. One is the size of the development here, and the second is problems with traffic. First, the size. We've heard from a number of residents nearby that they are already subject to setbacks on their houses. Why cannot this development have the same setback on Ferris and Prospect as the other houses? The picture that the developer has put together of this project with all of the hoopla about saving this historic house, you can't even see the historic house because the historic house is set farther back from the curb. So why not have this development have the same setback on both Ferris and Prospect with a two, two-and-a-half-story height? That would be consistent with the residential area that it's already in, and it would be a transition from the central business core. Secondly, the issue of traffic. I'm very familiar with the issue of Clark, Ferris, and North Avenue. I've had three sons that I've raised. They've been at the Westfield Y for years. They're all grown now. But I spent every evening picking them up from the key program or dropping them off for various programs or for summer programs. And that, in the intersection of Ferris, Clark, and North Avenue is a disaster. Now, you're talking about putting a traffic study. The problem is that, right now, the traffic study is going to underestimate the problem because Lord &amp; Taylor is closed. That particular site, when it was in full use, had many, many cars turning onto North Avenue and turning from North Avenue onto the site, which limited, limits the ability of drivers from Clark to turn on North, and that blocks Ferris as well. Now, one of the problems that we're going to have, if you have this development, it's particularly the size, is that there's going to be a lot more traffic on Ferris. We're going to have a greater likelihood of having safety issues because of the multiple kids that are constantly being dropped off, picked up, and crossing Clark Street at the Y. There's been very much an underestimation of the impact of what this will have on people interacting with the Y. You have no idea, you should have an idea, how important the Y is to the community and the impact that it has on the traffic in that particular site. So how, even putting a traffic light on Ferris and Clark is not going to solve the problem of people on Clark trying to turn on North Avenue. Even with two lights, the backup is going to be enormous, and you haven't even included the development of the Lord &amp; Taylor site, which is going to be, have an enormous impact. So any traffic study is going to be totally underestimating the problem that's going to be developing over time. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Frank Fusaro, 422 Stanley Avenue in Westfield. I've been a Westfield resident tomorrow, makes 56 years. I, for those of you who heard some of my comments last evening, I apologize, but I'd like to reiterate it to the rest of the town council. One of the items I touched upon last night was the parking for this particular project. As you know, as you heard from resident of the Savannah, the Savannah has 35 apartments and 70 parking spaces. That's two per apartment, and she said that they are already short parking. The proposed parking for this particular project is 1.5 spaces, and several members of the planning board wanted to lower that even more. I'm extremely familiar with this area. I've built an addition at the Westfield YMCA, and I also constructed the Redeemer Lutheran Church and School. I'm a developer, a builder, and an engineer, so you would think that I would be in favor of such a project. I am in favor of a project going at this location, as many of the people here expressed this evening. However, not this particular project. 64 units is way too large of a project for this, for this small area. This particular project calls for something along the lines of townhouses or a smaller, lower-density project. No one has mentioned the impact on the infrastructure of the town, fire, police, schools, et cetera. I'm sure that will be taken up by the planning board or this council at some point in time. Mr. Specter, who previously testified, brought up projects of this size in Union, Summit, Morristown. Those projects are not, do not, abut, single-family residential homes. This is a unique project that abuts, single-family residential homes. So I would implore you to please revisit this project, the size and scope of this project, and have it reduced before it gets approved. Thank you for your time.
My name is John Lacy, and I am a former resident of Westfield, currently just over the Westfield border into Mountain Zone. And just a little history, we lived over by the high school in a six-bedroom, and four of our children got older and we were downsizing. And I wish this proposal existed back then, and it was just a few years back. And why? Because we could then enjoy the downtown that we love, that we still use every once in a while, but only every once in a while because now we're a mile away instead of a block away. But someone alluded to it earlier, and that is, with this particular project, you're going to have a lot more traffic. And just since I moved, you've lost at least three, four, five different national chain stores, not to mention the Lord &amp; Taylor. And creating traffic for these retailers is essential in order to preserve this town. It's been this way. This is what Westfield is known for, and it's lost that touch. And all of these other locations, including the ones that were just mentioned, but Cranford as well, they are creating new and different things in order to make sure that their downtowns thrive. And that's something that Westfield has lost. It's losing. It's losing every day that you stand still. Now, with this particular project, and I know Mr. Ward, he cares about this town. He cares deeply about this town. He's been dedicated here for decades. But more importantly, what I've seen, I saw this project a year and a half ago, and I know that all of the municipal bodies have done their due diligence, have done a lot of fact-finding. I know, Mayor, you've done a lot of fact-finding concerning this over the last year and a half. You mentioned knowing something about it in 2018. And so this has already been scaled back from the original project. I know that there's been a lot of input, I know that there's been a lot of input from people who were critiquing this so that the historical structure was going to be restored. That was not the original plan proposed by Mr. Ward. It was going to be incorporated into the plan, but it wasn't to restore it and preserve it. So those are the types of concessions that he's made, and I think that this town has encouraged future developers to work closely with town commissions, as well as the council, to make concessions, to be consistent with the needs of both developers as well as the town. So I do support the project, and I look forward to maybe living in there someday. Thank you.
Mr. Lacy, just curious, how do you know so much about the project?
I'm, because I had seen the plans way back when, and I actually was at the house, the house that the lady mentioned. Can you imagine me going into that house? I looked like an elk.
I'm just curious, I'm on the town council, and how did you see that plan a year and a half ago?
Okay. Because he had already been looking at a concept, and it was larger. There was someone, there were historical people. I mean, as soon as they heard the possibility of this--
What's your position?
They wanted to scrutinize it. They wanted, because they were protecting the town.
No, but what's your involvement in all this?
I'm sorry?
What's your involvement in all this?
I've just, I've known him from years, for years. I'm an attorney as well, so I've known him professionally in real estate.
I'm sorry, this is not, this is not a Q and A.
I do not represent--
I'm sorry, this is not a Q and A, so thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill West, 663 Summit Avenue. I am also in opposition to this--
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, folks, sorry. Bill West, 663 Summit Avenue. I've lived in town for 36 years. My family's lived in town for, gosh, going over 100 years now. I am also opposed to this project. I went to the planning board meeting last night. I voiced a lot of my concerns. I'm not going to repeat everything that's said. Of course, there's a traffic problem. Of course, there's a parking issue. Of course, there's, you know, the safety concerns that I have. But I want to focus on the transition, okay? If you look up Prospect, that hasn't been mentioned yet, it rises. So you go from a big building right on Broad Street to a bigger building, to a bigger building, and now to another bigger building. When you look up the street, the tunneling effect, the urbanization effect, is much more pronounced. And I reiterate, reiterate with one of the other residents had said, you didn't see any pictures of the other side. So when you talk about a transition, let's look at both sides, okay? And I do think the project needs to be scaled back. And if any of the council folks have seen the development at the end of Grove Street, Grove Street East, I think that would be much more appropriate at this location. It's literally a two-story residential neighborhood which would conform to the existing zoning and not have to build this enormous structure. 64 units, and I said it last night, one acre at Westfield Circle, 30 units. This is one acre, 64 units, way too much of the size. And just one thing on the interpretation of the reexamination survey, and I just, it hasn't been mentioned yet, but I think it's a big leap to suggest that the responses from the reexamination survey mean that in order to revitalize downtown, we need to build all these apartments, and that foot traffic is going to help downtown. I think it's much more than that, and I don't think the residents meant that when they responded to the survey in 2019. And of course, we all want the downtown to do really well, but to say that we need to build hundreds of apartments and that's going to solve the downtown problem, that's, it's not that easy. And I don't think the residents meant that in their responses to the survey. I think it's, I think it's a stretch, and I think it's a leap. After hearing what everybody said here, I think we really need to take a step back and take a look at it again. Thanks again for your service and your time today, and your volunteerism. Appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Estrogenis. Excuse me. I'm like--
Oh, okay. My name is Estrogenis, and I live at Chelmsford, 260 Prospect Street. I've been a resident of Westfield for over 50 years, and the last 15 years downsized to Chelmsford. One thing I noticed in the presentation, as far as saying that it conformed to the neighborhood, there was a total absence of showing the other side of the street and of the street, which many presenters have said. If you look down the street, there's a, before Chelmsford, there's another condo development, and there's green grass, and there's flowers, and they're set back quite a bit from the street. If you look across the street, you see lovely old houses that have been redone with nice lawns and well taken care of. I noticed that he did show the building at the corner, which is, I don't know the name of it, but it's a hive building. It's an old building, and it's been there for a very long time. I'm not totally against that development of that corner, and I know there are traffic problems, but I think that the size of it and the dimension is way, way too large. And also, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Claudia Sousa, and I live at 500 Montauk. I'm on the south side, so I really don't have a dog in this fight. But the things, there are two things that I wanted to bring up to this. And the first one was this. Have you seen all the people who have come here? My guess is that most of them are here because they read the letter to the editor in the Westfield Leader last week about the woman, the very lengthy and excellent letter to the editor. And that's how they found out about it, which means there is something wrong with dissemination of information to the town, especially to the man who lives in Cranford who owns something that property. So evidently, it's not enough to have it in the leader and to tap into or into the Westfield patch. Somehow or another, unless you send some, you may have to send some kind of information packet to every town owner, and that's going to be expensive, but it's worth it. That's, that's one thing that I, that I needed to mention. And I appreciate, I appreciate all of your time and your work, but the other thing also is, these people here are the tip of the spear. I mean, the ones that you see here are very upset, so you have to be able to understand that there's probably more going on, but they don't know. And also, the people who have young children, they're too busy to come to a meeting like this. So somehow or another, you have to disseminate information. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deirdre Jeline. I live at 131 North Euclid Avenue. I've lived in town for almost 30 years, and I'm not opposed to all development, and I appreciate everything the council's trying to do to increase the vitality of the downtown, keep our businesses strong. But I also think that it's not fair to ask this neighborhood to bear the burden of a building that's just way too large for this site, and it's going to bring way too many people-- It's not my neighborhood, it's not where I live, but I actually work right on that corner of Ferris and Prospect, so I do observe the traffic, which is constant from Trader Joe's, as we've all talked about. And I, and I think, as several people have said, that it's actually not even as bad now as it would be if the Y was running all their programs and if the Lord &amp; Taylor site is developed, et cetera. There are two very narrow streets, and they're already bearing a lot of traffic, and there's just constant backup, and it's hard to make left turns, as a number of other people have also said. And the second objection I have to this project, several people have also mentioned, is the lack of setback. I think when you look at this neighborhood with these houses, and we want to try and preserve some of the character of these neighborhoods, having this building come all the way out to the sidewalk pretty much, it's not downtown, it's not East Broad Street, so I don't think it's fair for the neighborhood to have that kind of building. And I'm concerned because--
preserve some of the character of these neighborhoods, having this building come all the way out to the sidewalk, pretty much, it's not downtown, it's not East Broad Street. So I don't think it's fair for the neighborhood to have that kind of building. And I'm concerned, because I also live on a street that's near, I'm just a few houses in from East Broad Street, and my concern is, is this just the first project of this kind that's going to happen? What if one of the projects on the corner of East Broad and North Euclid gets sold, and a huge building like this goes in? I don't like the precedent. So just wanted to express my opinion. Thank you.
So it looks like we're at the end of the line. So thank you all very, very much for coming and for your comments. So I'm going to close this public portion of the hearing. Can Chris address some of these things? Should we wait till the discussion, or can we have some of this?
Mayor, you have to bring the...
Oh, give it back? Even if, even to address some of their comments?
No, if you're going to address some comments.
I thought maybe we could address some of their public. Should we do it now, or should we do the actual ordinance vote for discussion?
Do it now.
Want to do it now?
Yeah.
Can I bring Chris up to ask some, answer some of these questions?
Hearing is closed.
Yes, the hearing is closed. So Chris, would you mind? I'm just going to bring Chris. There's a, I mean, there's obviously a lot of consistency in terms of, I think, what we heard tonight. And I thought maybe there are a few things in particular. Let me just address the one thing about the notice. I think everybody brings up really good points about we didn't, you didn't know. The notice requirement is when it goes to the planning board. And that notification actually has to physically go to people's homes within 200 feet. So the actual, just fair...
You did not.
No, no, no. No, we haven't hit that part yet. It's the site review. When they actually submit site plans, that's later, that would be later in the process. That's when you get a 200-foot notice. These, an introduction of an ordinance, like we did two weeks ago, is, that's an introduction. And then, and there isn't, it's not until it gets a site planned is there actual notification requirement of all the neighbors. And that indeed will happen if this project moves forward. The only thing I could add to everybody is, of course, it was picked up in the local press. And I would just encourage everybody, you know, I send out a mayor's update every Friday that details everything that's happening in town, anything that we talk, that we vote upon, that we discuss. It's very, very detailed. And I would just encourage you, and we've been searching for ways to make sure people can get notified about everything. So I would just encourage you, if you could go to westfieldnj.gov, and you look in updates, sign up for the mayor's updates, and it will push it to you every Friday. It'll text it to you, or it'll email it to you. And everything will be there, including information about this project. And other than, you know, we try to be as aggressive and proactive as communication as possible, whether it be in the press, social media, email. So I could just encourage you, please, please, that we've tried to get as many people signed up for those updates as possible. But that's, that's where you know everything that's going on, you'll be pushed to you every Friday afternoon. And then I send out updates on, then my, these remarks that I gave tonight also get pushed out before, after every single council meeting. So everybody knows what's going on. So there is no attempt to hide this or keep it secret. It's like, we really need everybody to want to stay informed and help us, help us keep you informed. But this isn't at the process part yet, where neighbors would officially be notified. That wouldn't, that happens way farther along in the process, when it gets to the planning board. So with that, let me just, there's a couple of things, and any of the council members, feel free to chime in. I mean, I think, what I heard, what people have asked about is the setback. Why is there only a 12-foot setback? The height relative to, I think, surrounding, surrounding buildings? And I think maybe, well, the density, and any more, some specificity around the traffic study and what would be required. Is there any, anything else you guys?
I think that was mostly it, right?
So, so, okay, so Chris, do you think, could you take a stab at addressing? And by the way, the other thing I just did want to clarify about Chris Colley, someone mentioned that consultants say what you want to hear. Chris Colley works in collaboration with our town planner, Don Sammet. Where are you, Don? There's Don. So we have a town planner. And we, Don, our town planner, who is a town employee, represents our interests and the town's interests. We bring in additional redevelopment planners, specifically for redevelopment planning. But they only work at the direction and in collaboration with our town planner. So I just want to be very clear about what that relationship is. They don't represent developers, they represent the town on behalf of our own town planner. So, so Chris, maybe you could address some of those?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll try and stand this way.
Chris, maybe you should take your mask off, yeah? People can hear you.
Okay. So I do appreciate everybody's comments, and listened to them all quite closely, took good notes over here, so I'll try and address as much as I can. So I guess, starting with the building type and the setbacks, you know, to an extent, building design is subjective. You know, we tried to take a selection of buildings that were in the area, sort of show a variety of those building types. And, you know, I understand there was one comment about we don't sort of need to follow the master plan recommendations so rigorously. But, but when we were working on understanding what was an appropriate building type for this area, like, we really, we really did so. So I think we started with that, that four-story building in mind. I think it's, it's pretty clearly recommended for that location to go up to four stories. And I think that the building concept in there, you know, architecture is subjective, is reflective of quality design. The setback issue, for me, in that location, I think the important element to consider with setbacks is, will the setback provide an attractive pedestrian environment for folks that are going up and down Prospect Street? I think the 12-foot minimum sidewalk width there is appropriate for that. And I also want to...
Listen, I'm so, please, please just be respectful, and he's giving you point due please.
And one thing I want to, like, just a piece of, a wrinkle to consider as it relates to the setback, is that the building, it's a long building frontage, right? So the building needs to, under the plan, be articulated, meaning it needs to sort of jog in and out, right? And we've included recommendations for things like stoops and things of that nature. And those projections, whether bay windows or stoops, that's really what's driving that setback and driving that, that short distance. I think that a building implemented under this project, the building face would likely be, be more than 12 feet back. But, you know, it's, it's frankly, like, this plan calls for a building that's oriented towards the street, that is more indicative of a downtown-type building. I think that's, that's reflective of the master plan. And I appreciate, frankly, the difference between the two, and the difference between a building up against the street and a building with lawn. But that was, that was our thought process and how we came to that recommendation.
And Chris, could you explain the difference between, like, the savanna and this building or project from the street?
Sure. Yeah, happy to. When you walk along Prospect Street, along the savanna, you face concrete wall, right? You face the edge of the parking, you face, there's a sort of like utility gate there. This building is going to be, if it's approved, designed in a way that meets the street in a very different way, meets the street in a more residential way, meets the street with stoops, meets the street with direct entry units, with openness, with windows, with things of that nature. I think it's a very different 12 feet, frankly, for the project that's being proposed here versus the project that's being, or that exists at the savanna presently.
May I ask Chris a question?
Sure.
Yeah. About 12 years ago, I was on the planning board, and a developer at the time promised to save, it was called the Bagger House on East Broad. The house fell into decay, and then it was determined that they couldn't restore the historic home. So I know a big feature of this is the historic home. Now, is it going to have to be moved under construction? If so, is it going to be stored somewhere? So that's the part I'm trying to understand, where this historic home's going to be during construction at this, at this time.
Sure. So the actual preservation of the home is going to require, like, technical work that frankly extends beyond what is possible under the redevelopment plan. That's why we require, under the plan, the submission of a protection plan, which is prepared by someone who's experienced in historic preservation and things of that nature. And that's why we require that submission, frankly, to make sure that one of the chief objectives of this endeavor isn't sort of lost in the process of construction.
And that will be, I'm sorry, and there'll be some input or oversight from the Historic Preservation Commission on that presumably?
There certainly could be.
Yeah, which we should want to be, got it? So, yeah, go ahead.
Chris, I'm hoping that you can also talk a little bit about what, what happens next and over what timeframe. My understanding is that you can't agree, a redevelopment agreement to the developer until the traffic study is complete. So can you please tell us what, when the traffic study is conducted? There's a parking study that's also part of the requirement in the redevelopment plan. And it might also be good, because you did go through the description of this pretty quickly earlier tonight, just to make sure that everyone in the audience understands the difference between what we're looking at tonight as a redevelopment plan and what happens ultimately in terms of a redevelopment agreement and the rights that the town will have under a redevelopment agreement that the town has not had in any other downtown redevelopment that's occurred to date.
I'll start with the last question first. The redevelopment plan, like, the redevelopment plan essentially sets the rules for the project and sets the boundaries of the project, sets the maximum number of units, sets the setbacks, sets things of that nature, like traditional zoning and things that are reflected in the documents. It also can, and in this case does, sets an expectation for what a redeveloper would be required to propose in order to advance the project under the redevelopment agreement. So some of the things that I've mentioned tonight, that would be required under a redevelopment agreement are the protection plan that the councilman just raised, the reuse plan, to speak to the specificity of the programming of the historic structure, a lot of design drawings, frankly, which, which we saw on the Westfield Crossing project. If you'll recall, when we came back for the redevelopment agreement on that project, there was a lot more detail in terms of building design, building elevations. A presentation of a redevelopment agreement would not include me saying this is conceptual, right? It would include an actual presentation of this is what the building that comes to the planning board would look like. In this case, the agreement would also require the, the traffic impact study, right? And you raised that, and that's, that's come up a lot. So we, before bringing this plan to the council, did ask the property owner to prepare some preliminary information so we could understand the extent, and frankly, whether or not it was worth bringing the project to this phase. We also, so we sort of did that as a first round of due diligence, but we also, you know, being familiar with the area, frankly, and knowing that traffic is always a primary concern, wanted to make it very explicit in the document that there would be an expectation of any redeveloper, that whatever the impacts that were identified in that study, that the council determined needed to be mitigated, would be mitigated, and that the obligations for that mitigation would be included in the redevelopment agreement. So that's really the purpose of that structure, of requiring that study. It's to identify what improvements would be necessary, and it's to provide you, the council, with a, with a way of controlling that, and hopefully, although perhaps not so successfully, provide a level of comfort to the public that, like, this is an area where the town is being sensitive to this potential impact and is maintaining a level of control over that impact. Does that make sense?
Sorry, I did ask a lot of questions all at once.
Yeah, please.
So if you can just talk about, when does the traffic study start?
Right.
And I hope that's the very next step in the process, because I think that the only way that this goes forward is if we can address what are pre-existing problems with congestion, traffic, pedestrian safety, and parking. And so unless we can address those things to the satisfaction of the council, then it's going to be extremely difficult for this project to go forward. So I hope that you're going to tell me that the traffic study starts next.
Yes, so if you adopt this plan, the next step, the agreement, is required to include that traffic study. My hope would be procedurally, that if we get to that step well in advance of a meeting where you're considering a redevelopment agreement, there's an opportunity for you, and perhaps concerned members of the public, to review that study and to understand what the recommendations of that study are. So yes, absolutely, before this project moves...
...members of the public...
...moves past the agreement phase, or before any agreement is approved, like, that, that traffic study would be, would be required. But frankly, like, you're saying when, like, and you might be saying, like, next week or next month. When the agreement comes forward is flexible, right? The agreement, you could adopt a plan, and there could never be an agreement, right? Or you can adopt a plan, and there can be an agreement in two months. That's just sort of dependent on how, pace of the project and how it evolves.
And the traffic study initially is conducted by the developer? So that, the study would come to you then?
No, so the town...
And then you would look at it? So if you could just help us understand how that works?
Sure. The town has retained, I think a few months ago, a traffic engineering firm, WSP, thank you, specifically for these matters. I am not a traffic engineer. I frankly wouldn't, you wouldn't want me to be the one to review it. WSP would be responsible, and they've reviewed the preliminary data we received, they would be responsible for reviewing the findings of the study and reviewing the proposed measures and frankly vetting whether or not those are sufficient to...
Right. So it's, so a study is, would be done by someone that the developer would identify, and then WSP would look at it from the town's perspective?
That's correct.
And measure it against the master plan, measure it against the pre-existing issues that the neighbors see, I see, I think everyone on this council sees in that area? And so, but that would hopefully be, you know, a next step.
That's right.
Chris, one of the residents had a question. Rentals, but can they be changed to co-ops or condos?
Yeah, so, I'm going to fill here, but I think, when I...
Hi, everyone. Guest speaker, Phil Abramson here. So under the, under state law, we can't regulate the nature of residents, whether they're homeowners or renters. We cannot regulate the nature of housing in that way. The Supreme Court has decided that. So we could say multifamily, we could say residential, we could say retail, whatever, those are land uses. But we cannot regulate the nature of occupants. So...
So at any point, it could be...
When we say, when we say multifamily, it's a structure, it's a land use, it means, you know, residential units that are attached to each other, there's usually a hallway, there's usually parking. That's what zoning does. Zoning does not get into the social engineering of, these have to be homeowners here, and these have to be renters there, and you could understand why.
Right. So moving this forward doesn't matter if they're co-ops, condos, or rentals?
Under state law, we have to be blind to that. Yeah.
We have to be blind to it.
We would have to be blind. We have to be agnostic when it comes to the nature of occupants.
So I'm sorry, this is, I just, I just want to be clear. The hearing is closed?
Yeah.
You no longer accept questions from the public? So I, I think it's very clear, we have to be blind. I can tell you, from everything we understood, the intention is that these are rentals. But we can, we cannot make, nor, nor would honestly, whether they're condos or rentals most likely affect the, the outcome. And they, and it shouldn't be. So, and so they're intended to be rentals, but to the point, that's not something that we can dictate.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Councilman Contract from afar?
Yes.
You hear me?
Yep.
Oh, hi. Just, Chris, related to the traffic study, I brought up the addition of that fourth intersection, which some residents spoke about tonight, Clark and North. Can that be a condition of approval? Because I really believe it needs to be part of this traffic study. I think that is one of the towering issues with this project, given the streets, given the existing traffic and congestion. And I also think it was a good point about, you know, does the traffic study envision what may come in this area with Lord &amp; Taylor, or is it predicated only on what exists today? So two questions, I hope you heard them.
I did, thank you. To your first question, after you asked that question at the last meeting, I did go back to the plan. It says that you shall study at least those three intersections. I think that... I think that if you and the council feel that that's important, and certainly I've heard from the public that they feel that's important, that you, when you are considering a potential redevelopment agreement, should require that that fourth intersection be studied. I think you're perfectly within your right to do that. So short answer to your question, yes. The second question about background growth, or what, how will the study consider other things that may happen? You, the town in retaining WSP, you retained the same consultant who worked on your master plan. Part of that master plan was considering the sort of overall level of potential growth in the town and how that would affect the roads. I think WSP is uniquely qualified to help consider those things in the traffic study, so they should, they should do that, and we should make sure that that's part of their analysis.
Another guest speaker, our redevelopment council.
Robert Goldsmith, I serve as special counsel to Westfield, and if the council desires, given the concerns that have been expressed and expressed by members, I'm sorry, by members of the council as well, the council can just determine in instructions to consultants that before there should be negotiation on any kind of redevelopment agreement, the traffic study should be undertaken and reviewed. So you have that authority.
The power, great.
Okay.
And one other thing to mention is that, under the local redevelopment housing law, you have enormous control over a project that you wouldn't have in a normal land use context. So if there's a need for true divided light windows, you can negotiate that, slate roofs, I mean, you have a control that is not otherwise available to you. There is a flexibility in terms of what you want, but ultimate, the final decision is remarkable control.
Thank you. And I think that speaks to Mr. Goldsmith's point about some of the subsequent process in terms of review by the Historic Preservation Commission, site plan reviews, so some of those architectural specifics can still be determined and be part of the larger negotiation, Any other comments or questions?
Mayor, I would just like to say that when we do eventually vote on this later this evening, I, like David Contract, would like to add in the provision that the traffic study include the Clark and North intersection.
Yeah.
And I would base my vote on that.
Yeah, I think, but I don't think that has to be part of the vote tonight. I think that comes, it's already accounted for, but-
You can just direct the planning department and your consultants that that is a mandate of whatever studies to be undertaken, without which you won't proceed with negotiations for redevelopment agreement. So you have that, you have that inherent authority, whether it's in the plan or not. The plan is broad enough to permit that fourth intersection to be included, and you can direct us to do that.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, what's the next step? Because I would like to say something before we vote.
I think, well, why don't we wait until we get to the discussion part of that?
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that was just more, okay, so we're going to move on to moving forward, general ordinance number 2230, that's you, Councilman Hapgood. Oh, is that, oh, yeah, sorry. See if they're still there, that's right. And thank you, Chris, very much.
Sorry, we just need to bring our colleagues back so we can proceed.
We're just going to take about a five-minute break while everybody comes back and we deliberate,
All right, if everybody could take their seats, please, it's late, we got to go, we still got work to do. Thank you, all right. Okay, I think have, we're waiting for the two council persons, are they coming? Councilman Boys and Councilwoman Mackey? Yeah. Yeah. All right, where'd they go? All right, there's Dawn with you. All right. Who are we missing?
I think he was in the-
Oh, was that-
Chris Mark.
Mark, okay, let's just give him a second, thank you all. Thank you for hanging in there with us. All right, here we go. All right, so Councilwoman Hapgood.
Okay, we're going, we're going on to another topic just for a minute here, folks, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for the adoption of general ordinance number 2230 on second reading, an ordinance to amend general ordinance number 2154 entitled, "An Ordinance to Amend the Code of the Town of Westfield, Chapter Two, Administration, Article Two, Town Officers and Employees, Division Three, Personnel Positions and Salary Schedule, Section Point Two Dash Twelve Point Twenty-Eight, Schedule."
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippo?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boys?
Yes.
Mayor Brindell?
Yes. This motion is carried. Councilman Parmally, please move for the adoption of general ordinance number 2231.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, sorry. Thank you.
Send our friends off.
I'd like to move for the adoption of general ordinance number 2231 on second reading, an ordinance adopting the Prospect and Ferris redevelopment plan.
May I have a second?
Second.
About Councilman Dardia, any discussion?
Yes, so, first of all, I'd like to thank all the residents for coming out tonight and sharing all of your concerns. I have also gotten a lot of email correspondence from particularly residents nearby this property, and I want to thank you all for taking the time to, you know, write those emails and come out tonight. It's really important that we hear from you. I am very much for development near our downtown. To ensure the vitality of our downtown into the future, we need to make sure that we have more foot traffic, and we need, as the owner of Farinolio shared with us tonight, we need to make sure that we're supporting, can you guys hear me? I'm sorry, we need to make sure that we're supporting our downtown businesses with people. So I say that on the one hand, on the other hand, I think it's incredibly important, before we would go forward with this project, that we look at the existing problems that I have heard about for four years since I've been in this office, congestion, traffic issues, parking, and pedestrian safety issues in and around particularly the Ferris and Prospect intersection. So I definitely would like to support taking this project forward, but I think the very next step needs to be looking at a comprehensive study about the circulation and the traffic and the concerns that the neighbors have raised tonight, because we wouldn't want to put the developer through a further process without really addressing those things to make sure that we can all reach a satisfactory point on that, and so that's what I would like to-
Yeah, and I, I think that's, was been very consistent that we've heard from everybody, and I think someone had suggested, who was at the planning board last night, to do the traffic study first before you move this forward, and I think that's essentially what we're saying, is that we'll, we'll take this step, but the next step is absolutely a comprehensive traffic study, and unless we are comfortable with where that comes out and what the mitigation solutions could be, this project will not move forward. And I think that's, that's, that's where I, and I, I do love the control that this redevelopment gives us. I know we have many folks from the Savannah here tonight. The town did not have that control. We basically gave a variance and had no more control over anything, and that is the beauty of redevelopment, is that we can, what you're seeing tonight in terms of the criteria that we're going to put in place and contingencies before we would even allow this to move forward, we're able to do because of that. And you, and you all will be part of that solution, and I think our commitment to you is when we do that, we'll be sure that you all are included in that, not only in the participation of that process, but ultimately in the, in being comfortable with the outcome. And it's not just about making recommendations, I'm also, I want to know the commitment to actually making them happen. And I think, and we have done an initial pedestrian study, I think you guys that were part of a townwide study probably saw some of the, some of the recommendations were short-term, was right turn only at that intersection, a potential light, but I think this gives us the opportunity to take a more holistic view of all of those things, and you have our commitment that we're going to do that, you'll be included, and we, and we'll have a timeline for when we'll make those implementations.
This is Councilman Contract, as part of that traffic study, I think Councilman Dardia mentioned it, but I couldn't hear. I do think that fourth intersection needs to be part of it, because it's got to be an integrated study of the entire area. I also think, you know, parking, I don't, I think I heard that parking was part of it too, and I would support that, particularly if, you know, the parking, it wasn't talked about, where is the parking for the cultural center, you know, in the historic property as well as the retail cafe? Like, I do know, because I frequent the Y with my kids, that parking is a challenge in that neighborhood, particularly if there's an event at the Y which is frequent.
I'll just add, I have heard from, first of all, I really appreciate all the comments that we've received from all the residents here in person tonight. I've had a lot of email comments from residents of Ward Two and elsewhere, also some good friends of mine, both in support and opposition of it. I do think what I, what I appreciate about this is proceeding through the redevelopment plan allowed, it really does give us the ability to control a lot of the different aspects of the project, and I think that's one of the reasons that I support it. The second thing is I do recognize the traffic issues that arise, these are traffic issues that have been endemic to that area for a very long time. I think this actually gives us a real opportunity to take a real approach, a real, a real kind of fulsome approach to addressing all of the issues that already exist there. And, you know, I agree that it should, that the traffic study has to come out first before we enter into any, into any agreement. And I do, I agree with Councilman Contract and Dardia that I think adding- And I do, I, I agree with Councilman Contract and Dardia, that I, I think adding in the Clark and North Ave intersection is something that's important. I know that it's, there is some duplication of it, because a lot of the traffic that's traveling down Ferris and down, down those different, down Clark is gonna be addressed by the Ferris and Clark corner, but I think that it's important to incorporate particularly any changes that we might make, those might be changes that we'd want to incorporate in that intersection as well.
Anybody else? Okay, so, okay, so please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippa?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes. This motion is carried. May I have a meeting to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference and regular meetings, and we're not insulted if you want to leave, just saying, it's been a long night. Thank you all so much for being here.
So moved.
Jim and, Jim and Dawn.
Oh, oh, right, that's right. Thank you. Jim and Dawn. Kids have to come back. All right. Okay. So we're, you guys could, you guys, okay. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference?
Don't move.
Thank you, okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Mrs. Rowley, do we have any petitions or communications?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so believe it or not, it's now open time for discussion for citizens. If there's anyone that has any, wants to come to the microphone and speak to the council on any subject on which we have jurisdiction, please state your name and dress for the record and limit your comments to ten minutes, and you get props for being here at ten to eleven.
Thank you. And we're gonna, we're gonna shift gears a little bit, too, talk about something different. Good evening, my name is Lou Kimble, 622 Embry Crescent. My comments tonight are to support the proposed plan for adding two new fields with lights behind the Edison School. We've been fortunate to hear from numerous residents during this evening and over the past several weeks on this particular project, which demonstrates how we stay involved as a community and the willingness to have our voices heard. We all agree that Westfield needs to add additional athletic fields to meet the needs of the residents, while also improving our overall parks and recreational facilities to attract and retain new families to our town. We agree that starting the next fiscal year, our town must allocate the correct funding to significantly improve the upkeep of all of our athletic fields, grass or synthetic. Our fields are in poor condition because we just do not leverage the available tools to maintain field surfaces that are safe and playable for our residents of all ages that use those fields. We all agree that Westfield is a community with a long history and wonderful values. As our community was being developed, those early residents and leaders created an environment and culture we all benefit from today. Schools and recreational facilities were strategically placed across the town within our neighborhoods. This planning and execution created a town where our children can walk or ride a bike to school. A community where to use a recreational field, we need just to walk a few blocks from our homes or ride our bikes. When our town was being developed, there was no one driving their children across town or to other towns to participate in any sport or outdoor activity. I'm certain that the residents during those early years aspire to the same family goals we have today, which is for both school and play, our children should be living close to those facilities. We also have chosen to live in a Westfield, so when we sit on our front porch or in our backyards, we observe people walking their dogs, children playing, or hear the sounds of parents and grandparents cheering on their children playing sports. If we wanted to hear heavy trucks, the screaming of police sirens constantly, or the honking of horns, we would need to live somewhere else. We also agree that there is no proven health risk for our residents in the neighborhood around Edison School to play sports on synthetic grass surface. Most days, students of the Edison School will go across the street and use the synthetic surface at Keller for physical exercise. With all the experience and diverse backgrounds demonstrated by the community living around Edison, and we've heard from them all, if there were concerns, certainly that would have been called out long ago. I searched through records of Board of Ed meetings and even these council meetings, but I found no one has expressed concerns with Edison students using a synthetic grass surface in all weather or temperature conditions for PhysEd. As a community, we in Westfield are also confident it is safe for our children to play sports on synthetic grass surfaces across our community. We have high school students in a variety of sports using the synthetic field at Keller for training and games. In fact, the girls' state champion soccer team that you congratulated tonight trains and plays all their games on the synthetic field at Keller, and actually, almost all, except one, of their away games was played on synthetic, on the synthetic grass field as well. In addition to high school sports, our children participate in lacrosse, field hockey, and soccer, and putting in thousands of hours on the synthetic surface at Sid Fay and Houlihan. All this use has taken place for numerous years without any parent, resident, or Westfield medical professional voicing a concern. We disagree that synthetic grass fields are a threat to the environment. In the United States, we've been building fields with synthetic grass for almost fifty years. Likewise, synthetic playing surfaces have been installed in countries around the world going back almost as long. I'm confident, and if there was proven scientific data that established the installation or use of synthetic grass fields as harmful to our environment, our state or federal governments would have taken action long before now. Quite the contrary, as communities are building and leveraging new synthetic field surfaces every day, even in our area, new synthetic surfaces were added recently in Clark, Scotch Plains, and Cranford. We do not need every athletic field in Westfield to have a synthetic grass surface. However, we do need to increase the number of synthetic grass fields in our town. If we really are committed to having quality grass playing surfaces, we need additional synthetic fields to take the pressure off our currently overused grass fields, to allow rotations and recovery of those surfaces. We disagree that lights on the new fields behind Edison School will significantly affect the houses that sit fifty yards to hundreds of yards from those fields. Data demonstrates there is more light pollution in an Edison area home created from a forty or fifty-inch TV than ever will be generated from the lights being used on those fields. We need lights on more of our athletic fields to allow our residents of all ages to leverage those facilities, whether that resident is a school student or a New York City commuter that doesn't get home and off the train till after six-thirty at night. Council, over the past four years, you have been able to balance the desire of the residents you represent with the needs of the greater Westfield community. You have consistently demonstrated voting for what you feel is in the best interest of all of Westfield, even in some situations that not everyone in your ward might agree with you. You've moved affordable housing locations, you've allowed for a hockey rink, you've created opportunities for a brewery and a hydroponic farm, and you've leveraged a first-ever pilot program for the town. All brave decisions that move Westfield forward. The adding of new fields with lights behind Edison School is an opportunity for you to again be bold and forward-thinking. The project at Edison is our first step to deliver to all of our Westfield residents more quality outdoor recreational facilities. It is time we stop kicking the can down the road for more months or years. Edison is only step one, while Memorial, or Tamakwas, or Sid Fay or Houlihan, or another location should be quickly teed up right behind. The time for this council to act and to move forward to benefit the greater good of Westfield is here and in front of each of you. We count on you making it happen. Thank you.
Hi, Bruno Rodriguez, 1219 Boulevard. What he said. You kind of stole a little bit of what I was gonna say. I've been here a few times, some of you may remember, some of you may not, but I, I, the last time I was here, I talked about playing Scotch Plains and the rival game, and it was early in the season, and today we did something fantastic, which is to celebrate the end Ladies that won the state championship. They deserve to play with lights, they deserve the home game at Keller, that's a whole other issue, but it kind of dovetails with the fact that we do need additional fields. Edison is a step one, I fully endorsed it as well. I have a nine-year-old, I hope he plays at home, as opposed to my sixteen, who was a JV Union County champion for soccer, and my thirteen-year-old, they may never see it, thirteen-one maybe, but my nine-year-old should, so I ask you to make a quick decision, as the prior speaker noted. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing no further comments, I close this portion of the meeting and move to bills and claims.
Okay, buckle up.
Oh, yeah. Get your water.
All right, we've got a lot to cover.
And our starring role tonight is Councilwoman Hapgood.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $744,382.94.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Oh, I'm sorry, no, next, reports to standing committees, be it the Finance Policy Committee, Councilwoman Hapgood.
All right, thank you again, Mayor. I have twenty-six resolutions tonight, twenty...
Losing them, what?
Right, right. Sure you all want to stay? Twenty-five of which I'd like to move as a package. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant to refund street opening cash bond. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant to replenish the postage meter and postage permit. Number three, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for dog licenses for November 2021. Number four, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant for recreation department refunds. Number five, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw a warrant to refund construction permit fee. Number six, a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel sewer fee balances for 2021. Number seven, a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel delinquent tax balances for 2021. Number eight, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for overpaid taxes for 2021. Number nine, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for overpaid taxes due to veteran and senior citizen deductions for 2021. Number ten, a resolution authorizing the CFO to make transfers of appropriations for bills and claims. Number eleven, a resolution authorizing the CFO to pay December bills and claims. Number twelve, a resolution authorizing the CFO to sign biweekly warrants for the 2022 Teamster employee salaries effective January first, 2022. Thirteen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to sign biweekly warrants for 2022 Police SOA employee salaries effective January first, 2022. Fourteen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to sign biweekly warrants for 2022 Police PVA employee salaries effective January first, 2022. Fifteen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to sign biweekly warrants for 2022 Non-Union Employee salaries effective January first, 2022. Sixteen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to sign biweekly warrants for CWA Local 1040 employee salaries effective January first, 2022. Seventeen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for Mayor and Council annual salary for year 2021. You guys saw how much that was, right? Eighteen, resolution authorizing the CFO to cancel accounts payable. Nineteen, a resolution authorizing the CFO to set up, set up accounts payable. Twenty, a resolution authorizing the CFO to cancel grant receivables. Twenty, these are allowed to just clean up for end of year, in case you're wondering. Twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the CFO to cancel grant reserves. Twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the CFO to cancel outstanding checks. Twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the CFO to authorize 2022 debt service. Twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the CFO to cancel capital improvement authorizations. And number twenty-five, resolution to approve insertion, a special item of revenue in the municipal budget for the CBBG.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mackey, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
Just wanted to say one thing, I think the public needs to understand after a long night tonight, tonight, you just approved your dollar-a-year salary for 2021, and you cannot even cash the checks. So, thank you for true volunteer service.
Good, I'm glad, I'm glad you guys thought we earned the dollar.
You could have said that before the crowd left, Jim.
Hey, I'm up to, I'm up to ten dollars now.
And, and uncash checks, right, Councilman? So, next, I'd like to move a resolution authorizing the CFO to make budget transfers.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilwoman Hapgood?
Yes.
Councilman Parmally?
Yep.
Councilman LaGrippa?
Yeah.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey?
Yes.
Councilman Dardia?
Yes.
Councilman Boyes?
Yes.
Mayor Brindle?
Yes, this motion is carried. Next, Public Safety, Transportation, and Parking Committee, Councilman Dardia.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move a resolution adopting the Union County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Boyes, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is Code Review and Town Property Committee, Councilman Parmally.
Thank you, Mayor, I have four resolutions that I'd like to move as a package. Resolution approving the Handler Building, 610 North Ave, and a redevelopment agreement. Resolution setting date for Town Council 2022 organizational meeting. Resolution setting 2022 Town Council meeting dates. And a resolution adopting the Cyber Risk Management Plan.
May I have a second?
Second.
So, discussion, I do think we need to point out the Handler, Greg Rans and Michelle Modestino are here, and I think we all know, one of the most popular announcements we made last year was the, the adaptive reuse of the Handler Building into the hydroponic vertical farm known as Ready Farms. And, and Dawn, I, I, maybe you could give a little context to between the judge and I was, I, I think it's worth noting the Fair Share hearing and, and it happened.
Thank you, Mayor. So everyone's aware, we know we have a Handler redevelopment plan, we know we changed the site on, the zoning on the Williams Nursery site. Both of those properties were part of the town's court-approved affordable housing plan, so we can't just move forward and start changing things, adopting redevelopment plans. We have to be sure that those changes are consistent with our housing goals and are still provide an opportunity for us to, to be fair to low and moderate income households. So, with the amended zoning and adoption of the redevelopment plan, we had to amend our settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, which you had done. You had to endorse and amended Housing Element and Share Flare Plan, which you did. You adopted the Handler redevelopment plan, of course, you changed zoning on Williams Nursery site. Those, the redevelopment plan and zoning change, of course, allowed for the six-unit affordable obligation from the Handler site to be constructed at Williams. So we went to the court to get approval of these changes, as is required, because the court had approved our housing plan back in 2018. We'd amended it to allow for, again, Handler and Williams. Court had to bless that, and they did, and the judge was very complimentary of the town. It's working with Fair Share Housing Center and the property owners and developers in order to effectuate that. He called it not only fair to low and moderate income households, but he said it was kind of ingenious, to use his term. So he was very pleased with how Westfield is progressing in its housing plan. He's pleased, I think, in our relationship with Fair Share Housing Center, so it's really worked out well for us, and I think it's a, a big victory in showing everyone that we really are committed to affordable housing, as well as rehabilitating and redeveloping our existing properties.
Thank you, Dawn. And I think it's important for this council and the public to know, is that proactive relationship that we have with Fair Share is what enables us to be able to do things like create this opportunity at Handler, because we have this credibility with them in terms of our commitment to low and moderate income housing, so, thank you very much. So, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Congratulations, thank you all. Last is the Public Works Committee, Councilman Katz.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two resolutions that I would like to move as a package. One, a resolution authorizing change order, number one, for...
One, a resolution authorizing change order, number one, for Prospect Street improvements. And number two, resolution authorizing change order, number two, for various road improvements.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mackey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Parmally. All in favor?
Yes.
All is, this motion is carried, and this meeting is adjourned.
His ears are wrapped.